Good morning. Today is Tuesday, June 6th, 2023. Mr. and Mrs. Supervisors, each vote today will be full votes that members of the House, or members of the Senate, after we have had a motion and a statement regarding each item we are taking up today, there will be a roll call vote by district. And currently, please tell the votes. Jill Gaffes.
Yeah.
Richard Galloway. Doug Verboom.
Yeah.
Rusty Robinson.
Yeah.
Richard Corbinkins.
Yeah. Thank you. All five members are all present. The invocations, Mark, will be by Astrid Jones Smith, Jr., Mayor of the Valley, Sheriff, Captain. You've been good. So, uh, just an eight, yeah, did you like this? Thank you. I appreciate it. Do you like?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for such a beautiful day. This cool weather in June is definitely a blessing for all of us, and we're grateful for it. We pray your blessing on today's meeting. Just pray for all those in attendance and especially for the Board of Supervisors and decisions that they have to make and just ask for wisdom and guidance to give. And Lord, once again, we are grateful to live in this great country. We ask you to bless it, bless our leaders, and guide them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item up, the House General of Parents, who is panel first. We have the speaker cards.
I have not received any written correspondence. The first sheet of card is filed where at Castle.
Good morning. I wanted to just start by saying thank you so much for saving the whole Kings County Hospital. It's looking lovely. I would love driving by it and remembering the times that I worked in it. So then I had my office in a really awful part of the county. Also, I wanted to thank you for your concern about selling water outside of the county. And as a result of that, a group I belong to, the Jacob Carter Democratic Club, decided to have a water channel hall because we wanted to talk about how water is managed in Kings County and the situation with the drought. Of course, this was in January or February and before lockdowns came. So we've changed the focus and we invited Mr. Verboom, who's graciously accepted to speak, and we were so excited to hear from him. We have some other people coming. We have Mark Arax coming to talk a little bit about some books he's written, as well as I think he's written a recent something that I haven't figured out what it is yet that he wants to share about. We also have some people coming from Allenworth to talk about how their flooding happened in April when they had the big flood. We also have a Water Governance Panel headed pretty much by Dan O'Connell, who's a doctor at in something related to agriculture. I don't remember because I'm not anymore. Anyway, I wanted to invite you all. I have a flyer for you. It's okay for me to bring it up and give it to you. I have a flyer for each of the five of you and then we... Or do you want to pass them out? Okay, there's one for you as well as one for each of them. I hope I'm giving you six. I normally... Also, Sherway, thank you. If you do plan to attend, we'd really appreciate it if you would register through the Eventbrite link that's on the cards, a little QR code. You could snap with your camera and it'll send you. That way we will know you're coming and we can recognize you as a member of the Board of Supervisors when we do introductions of the leaders. And it is open to the public. And if people are interested, there's an Eventbrite link, or you can go to Eventbrite and search Hanford Events and it'll show up there. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bobby Wharton.
Good morning. My name is Bobby Wharton, and I'm the Executive Director for Kings County Commission on Energy. I just wanted to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors. We've been receiving a lot of calls from seniors saying thank you and want me to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for all the support. Nutrition sites are open. The one in Hanford, I am really surprised. They don't want to even miss lunch. They don't want to close. About, I think it was nine of them attended the health fair last Friday. They all came to say goodbye. We have to get back for lunch. I said, we're not, it's not over yet. No, we got to get back to lunch. We had Jim come in yesterday to get help with paperwork. He said, I got to be out of here by 11:30. I'll miss bingo, but I'm not missing lunch. So they are very thankful for the lunch. We have people coming from Fresno County attending our event. I found out yesterday, we have a couple of people from Tulare County that have sneaked in. So I just want to thank you. I want to thank the Sheriff Department, Sheriff Robison. He has been absolutely wonderful to help supporting the seniors. Sometime I'll send him a text to ask if they could do something, and I'm thinking he's going to say no. But before I even ask what I want, he'll say, do you need somewhere to store it? So they've been wonderful. They started a program over at the Sheriff Department to clean up, do yard work and clean up for seniors all the way. They love it. And this is saving seniors money that they don't have. So it is a wonderful program. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to everyone throughout the county. We've has gotten help from HSA, but they're paying seniors utilities. We've seen utilities bills as much as $5,000. I don't know how they're going to pay them. Last week, we had one over $5,000, or $2,000, or $1,000. So I just wanted to say thank you for all the support.
Good work. Thank you, Sharon.
The next speaker is Rosemary Roden.
Morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Rosemary Roden, Department of Public Health. I want to alert you a little bit of an issue going on in the Public Health Department campus. At 330 Campus Drive, we have a pest infestation in Building 5, 4, and parts of Building 3. They're getting treated by pest control. They're treated on Friday. They're coming out again on Wednesday. I wanted to alert everyone that our clinical services are being moved to the Lomor Clinic and the Corcoran Clinic, and they're by appointment, and they're signage. So there hasn't been a disruption in that. Monday was a little bumpy. And we're working at the admin and facilities to make sure everything's getting taken care of. And death certificates are being registered and processed as well as a certificate. So we just have to relocate staff to not impacted areas. But I wanted to alert you that there's clinical services still in train in the Lomor and corporate sites. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Ramos.
Good morning. Good morning, sir. I live here in the city. Recently, I was tuning into Los Angeles Station. It happened to be a news station that it was a day that they were raising a pride flag in color of county administrative offices in LA County. And in a conversation, they said, we're going to visit all the counties of California to put our flags up at county administrative offices. Now, I don't know if our county has an ordinance that might contain this issue or should come here, as they said they might. But I think it'd be wise somewhere on the line to address that issue. I know that we have several flags up. I don't know the protocol on that. But maybe some of you might want to try flags, but most of us don't in our county. So I hope that you might look at that issue and maybe talk to whoever needs to be talked to about how we might address that issue when it comes here. I think that I have a free time. That's...
The next speaker is Dusty Ferentz.
One second.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Dusty Ferentz. I'm before you this morning as the Executive Director of Kings County Farm Bureau. I'm working off of a letter here. I gave Catherine five copies, six copies of that. You guys can all get written copies of what we're here to talk about this morning. And that is ordinance number 706, the known as the county's groundwater export ordinance. While Farm Bureau supports in theory the ordinance and what it's attempting to do, and we appreciate you guys trying to protect our groundwater here in Kings County, we have several questions about the ordinance, and they're coming up now because we are concerned that growers in the county may inadvertently violate the ordinance. And we're worried about what those impacts are to farms, and we're trying to figure out how to advise our members on how to manage this ordinance. In particular, we have a question about the definition of export in Article 14, excuse me, Article 1, Section 14C-3. There's a pretty clear definition of what export means. But if you move on to Article 2, Section 14C-10, Item Number B, Sub-Ide Number 2, overwatering agriculture or other lands through flood irrigation or other means that cause excessive conversion of groundwater into tailwater. We're not exactly clear on how that is justified as an export. In that same section, the term "but" is not limited to seems to be a little too broad for this section, and we're hoping that you can clarify some of those. You know, provide some examples of what might be included in that, but not limited to section. We have questions about historical practices and the ordinance. Seven years, we don't understand that term. And let me give you an example. We're pulling out wallets in the county like crazy right now. Some of those orchards, 10, 15, 20 years old, goes back before the seven-year historical practices. So if a grower pulls out a 20-year-old orchard, plants corn there, and their flood are getting, furrow are getting that corn, are they now violating the ordinance as it's written here? We have questions about safe yield and sustainable yield, mostly with regard to who at the county have the technical expertise to determine that? Or is the county going to ask the GSAs that cover the county for their definition of safe yield? And then are you going to use that specifically in each geographic region that is covered by a GSA? Article 2, Section 14C-10B, we're back to this. I mentioned that earlier about definitions. This section seems to imply that the county can regulate surface water rights by forcing surface water right holders to use surface water before groundwater. We're not sure that that's what you guys are actually attempting to do here. But if that is, can you provide legal defensible authority as to having that? Do you guys have that authority? Your county have that authority? Overwatering of agriculture lands. This section lacks a definition. How will the county determine excessive conversion of groundwater into tailwater? Tailwater is a common term in the industry. It happens. But we don't know what excessive tailwater is, and I think that needs clarification. Almost done here. Section 14C-4. We have some questions about the county's ability and authority to investigate here. It implies that the county Community Development Agency Director has the authority to enter a farm possibly without permission. And it seems like there might be a violation there of the California Constitution. So we'd like some clarification on that item. We, so this ordinance, as we can tell, is complaint based, which allows for any member of the public to report a violation. And that's fine. What we're not clear on, though, is what happens once a violation is reported? Does the county, does the Community Development Agency have a protocol in place yet so a landowner knows what will happen next once a violation has occurred? And how will they be notified of a reported violation? Last item here, the ordinance describes an appeals process. If somebody applies for a permit and is denied that permit, but it does not mention any kind of appeals process for any violations or any alleged violations. So does the county intend to allow for violations, excuse me, allow for appeals violations? Or is a violation just one there? Again, we appreciate what you guys are doing and what is attempted to be done here. This is quite a long letter. You've got several copies of it, and we look forward to a formal response at some point from the county on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferentz. I appreciate you coming in publicly to your concerns on here, the fair questions. And counsel, I want to ask, you know, expect, what kind of reply can they expect this kind of letter? Any questions?
I could follow up with Mr. Ferentz and discuss those issues in the county and decide to, if that's a claim or not, this is, it's a request. It's a request for that formal reply, so we can discuss it and decide how we respond.
When will we be discussing?
I would suggest that I would follow up with Dusty, clarify his concerns, and then the board can establish a committee to consult with me and to...
Okay.
Sure. Take it off.
The next, the next speaker is Sarah Happer.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning, board members. It's a pleasure to be in front of me today. I'm honored to be able to present again, and I appreciate your patience and having me up here every week. Again, I wanted to bring to your attention that we are having incredible difficulties with staffing issues over the last week. I received another notification that one of our attorneys will be leaving to work for Riverside County's DA's office. In addition to that, I've had another attorney, in addition to the one that's leaving, have to take a 30-day leave of absence. Unfortunately, due to the difficulties in staffing my office, I've had to cut a prison position. Unfortunately, this is one of the positions in the office that results in the state reimbursing our office for the attorney's side. And that is income that our county will not receive because we just don't have the bodies to set up that position. Unfortunately, we are at a critical level. If we lose any more staffing, then we are at risk for losing our insurance grants, which brings in approximately $300,000 to our office and people at county for the purpose of prosecuting insurance clients. We have not had any applicants for any district attorney, definitely district attorney positions since we opened it. And in doing an informal poll, I have looked around. I've heard that other attorneys who are offering signing bonuses as well as retention bonuses, the counties that are offering these types of benefits, our current county, Riverside County, and possibly Monterey County. I haven't been able to confirm that. Today, you have an issue, that item that was presented by the county's Minister of Agriculture of Public Funds. I'm asking you to consider leaving such a portion of those public funds for either signing bonuses or retention bonuses for the DA's office. We are currently at critical levels. If we lose any for attorney's aid, we will have to consider cutting special prosecution units, such as the gang unit or the insurance fraud unit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, members. Anybody else's comments?
I was supposed to have someone from the U.S. Small Business Administration. There she is. Come on forward.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Good morning. How are you? I'm Mary Amber Edfield. I'm a Public Information Officer for the United States Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And that is a mouthful. Thank you for taking, having patience with that. I wanted to let you know, a lot of people don't understand that SBA in a presidential declaration is an automatic partner with FEMA in terms of recovery and long-term recovery. And under its own authority, SBA goes beyond the presidentially declared area to the contiguous county, which includes yours here in Kings. And we offer small businesses, small ag co-ops, private nonprofits, and aquaculture businesses, those economic injury disaster loans or idle loans for, to help them recover, and help them recover. Can't talk this morning. So what that is, is if they have had a, even if they hadn't had any flooding, if they had a business drop-off basically, or lost revenues because of the storms, we can help them with loan interest, long-term loans, potentially. They have to qualify as a loan. At 4% for businesses and 2.375 for nonprofits, up to 30-year terms. And for this disaster declaration, there are no payments and zero interest for the first 12 months to give them time to get back on their feet before they have to start making payments. So this is a part of the federal response to the floods. And they can go online at sba.gov or disasterloanassistance.sba.gov and apply there, and somebody can help them if they need some assistance. You've handed out, okay, I sent you all some materials. It also includes the toll-free number and those kinds of things. So you can hopefully share that information with your constituents so that they know that this is available to them. It's one of those little hidden facts that it's hard to get the message to those small businesses that are hurting. And, oh, yes.
Sharon, what's your question?
We received the information. I just want clarification. The physical damage filing due date was June 2nd. Is that an extension for that, or is that the set date for the...
That was actually just last night, extended to July 20th. Now, the physical Kings County is not eligible for the physical damage at this time that because you qualify for public assistance from FEMA, not individual assistance. It would require individual assistance under the Presidential Declaration. And I do understand that you're working with the state on that.
Got the question?
Yes, sir.
So since we really haven't had a spill yet, and the damage has hardly started, we think of this bill now should be about the 21st and 25th in there. That, the death of an animal will probably happen if we have a problem. And if it gets, we're very lucky, it's by nature to kind of calm to it. So will you extend your program if that happens?
If, again, it's you working with the state to work with FEMA to get into the individual assistance program if we're physical damaged. Right now, the deadline for that is July 20th. If they get that designation. But the deadline for the idle is already January 3rd, 2024.
Okay.
So they have plenty of time.
Good.
But I would get those, the ball rolling as quickly as possible.
Well, it's hard to get the ball rolling when the flood hasn't started really. I mean, we haven't had a film out, but then we'll have four. We're looking at, it may be four, probably about the 20 or so. So when the flood gave full without, then that's when it starts. We had earlier one in March 10th. So the majority of the water for sure, they come from the pipeline, which that's what happened.
Well, this disaster period is starting February 21st and continuing. It has not closed yet. So they can go ahead and either make an application or start the paperwork. And there are SBA resource partners, especially for those small businesses, that can help them make sure that they have all the paperwork together that they will need in preparation. And even if they can actually apply and put it on hold up to six months and then reactivate it and adjust it, those kinds of things. The reason I said that is there are so many disaster declarations, and there are only so many loan officers, and sometimes these get a little complicated. So I would, if it were me, and I'm an entrepreneur's kid who worked in that small business from the time I was eight, I would start putting that paperwork together just in case, even if you wait to actually make the application. Preparedness.
Yeah, I guess so.
I know that's hard.
We don't flood, yeah, but we want to wait. We know what we stand if I feel like it.
Well, I'm, I am sincerely hoping that you don't flood as well. But if they get, start pulling that paperwork together, if they do, and they have to leave their home, then they've got it.
Good.
So preparedness is the best course of action here.
We appreciate you being on your app. Please carry on being there. Your parents here this morning, there's a...
Well, thank you, and don't hesitate to contact me. If I can be of any assistance, I'll be here for one, as it seems.
Thank you. We should post for our social media. We should post today and that's selling information. Whoever's controlling that. Thank you, man.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
That's all that I'm aware of, but we have to get it quite online.
But anyone else in the chambers, before we close out the scandal? Okay, CNN, we'll move on. Next item is the reapproval of amendments. Item A, reported out in the first session. You will find our meeting from May 23rd, 2023. Do you want to take a motion? See, counsel, do you have an opinion?
Yes, actually, I do. Well, on May 31st, did you call the 31st?
We can take up A and B. A is May 23rd, B is May 31st.
There is no report collection before May 23rd. On May 31st, the Board of Supervisors voted to appoint Leonard Baker as the Chief Probation Officer for Kings County. An agenda item to set his compensation will be on June 13th, 23. The decision was made by unanimous vote.
Which, great. Okay, I'm seeing it for the 12 minutes. On May 23rd, we're meeting on 23, 20, almost 28. So who, who's finally been, saying goodbye for there, that's probably been over.
Florence?
Yes.
Richard Galloway. Doug Verboom.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Corbinkins.
Yes. Next is five to favor, and he is approval of the minutes from the special meeting from May 31st, 2023, for approvals. Thank you. Mr. Black, candidate, saying goodbye for Dan, Madam.
John Hes.
Yes.
Richard Galloway. Doug Verboom.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Corbinkins.
Yes. This is final favor. Moving on, same calendar, it's only sure this is correct. Item H, number two, is being approved by Jeff. You're, you're on the line, you're good with?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you want to say something, my answer?
I'm just ready. Whenever you want to hear H2, I would be glad to speak to.
Okay, so we're just going to take it up separately.
Okay.
Okay, with the modification, the consent calendar, the chairman wanted to take a motion.
Again, the rest of the consent calendar.
Now, smooth as a minute, second, Verboom.
Moving on there, saying with Doug Verboom, Madam.
John Hes.
Yes.
Richard Galloway. Doug Verboom.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Corbinkins.
Yes. This is five in favor. One, Sheriff, you might come back on the line.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Sheriff, for support. So this item was, has been in the works for a couple of years now. It's the body warm camera system for us, the sheriff's office. This was working through Congressman Valadeo's office and our legislative partners in the federal side of things. So we were lucky enough to get awarded the funding. The way funding works sometimes, though, is it was supposed to be a three-year program, but because it has taken so long to get to this point, it's a two-year program. The only reason I'd ask for it to be pulled and placed as a regular agenda item is there's no ongoing funding for this. So in two years, we'll have to work with county administration and your board of supervisors to either come up with funding to continue the body warm camera, or a decision will have to be made to discontinue the body warm camera, to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year to continue the program. And obviously, over the life of this type of equipment, there's additional costs when you have to replace the equipment, et cetera. So I just wanted that to be on the board's radar. That it's basically going to be a two-year pilot program for us. And then at the end of that, we can evaluate the program, work with county admin and your board of supervisors to see if we want to continue the program or not. That's why I asked.
And Sheriff said either lobbying for ongoing funds, but it would be a federal lobbying. And Sheriff, if either lobbying for ongoing funds, but it'd be a federal lobbyist.
It could, it, obviously, it can go either direction. Um, there's been a big push in California for body worn cameras up and down the state of California. And it would be nice if that was just a torpedium state budget ongoing for every agency going forward. But, uh, it's one of those programs that everybody likes it, but nobody wants to pay for it, it's ongoing. The ongoing IT costs are pretty pricey.
Thanks, sir. Actually, your comments from the board, I'm sorry. So you want to, you want us to vote to allow you to continue, then we'll come back in two years?
Yes, sir.
Still moved? Motion by Burton, saying a lot from Burton is wrong.
John Hough?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Rivers?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Rivers?
Yes.
We have two years, we can start off in, uh, federal and state, obvious, but, uh, entrepreneurs, keep this program continuing, but we'd like to have some data to show how it's working.
Absolutely, we'll have that a lot of time.
You're sponsored by the camera.
As far as we can take.
Arm your own. Cannabis. Okay, let's, I'm, I'm, excellent situation. So you know, Martina, do I have to say?
It's good morning, board members, Karen Martinez of the district, and Keith, how you're safe, approximately twenty-nine, twenty-seven million, which our funds intended to provide support in responding to the impact of COVID nineteen and their efforts to contain COVID nineteen's in the communities, residents, and businesses. This is all signed under the state and local current virus fiscal recovery fund legislation, part of the American Rescue Plan Act. So today, the funds sit in outside fund as to not falling in our channel. The committee have identified some needs for the use of funds to be considered for allocation as part of the spending plan from the board committee. The current proposed amount for the ARPA fund may intend to use at this time to approximately six point eight million. If the board approves the proposed recommendation, the remaining funds of the ARPA funds would all be allocated. This time, we have seventeen projects, and each department will present their projects. And the first project we have is from the sheriff's office.
Before this term, we resort, Dave Robinson, Kings County. So I have multiple projects on here. Um, and so our first one, in order to save the board a bunch of time, I know that the systems are laid out for you in writing in front of you. But basically, the first project is a sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollar project for licensed plate reader systems. You can see chief servers in the audience today. Um, they already have the platform, they have more cameras than we do, Corcoran has a few. Um, we're installing one in Kettleman City, and we're just looking to add to that platform. The district attorney's office has a platform as well. And so this just adds to that platform. And some of the main things, you've seen a lot of social media posts lately on, um, unfortunately, some of the crimes that have occurred in our jurisdictions. And, and a lot of that, uh, information, you'll see, uh, our photos from vehicles that are driving by a camera system. And so it's just an additional investigative tool for us to use, um, for, for that process is we're just trying to add more technology, it's just the wave of the future. And we're just trying to add more technology throughout the county and in some of the rural areas, so that when these crimes occur out in those areas, we have a mechanism by which to at least investigate the type of vehicle, the color, the time that it went through that scene, and, and things along that nature. So that's, that's my first item. And, uh, madam, if you want me to continue, I'll just go through all of ours, et cetera. Um, the next item is a hundred and forty thousand dollars for digital evidence storage for the sheriff's office. Over the course of the last twenty years, we've been saving the different videos and such over different cases that then get uploaded into an evidence folder. And then they get grabbed from that evidence folder by the district attorney's office and shared through these different cases um, that we investigate. And so it could be dispatch tapes, it could be crime scene video, it could be, uh, video from bystanders, ring cameras, you name it, we have it, and we're running out of the life of storage for that. And so it's a pretty cheap cloud option to take, um, our evidence storage and put it in the cloud. And we worked with the IT department on that item to, uh, make sure that we have an option going forward to store that data. Uh, the next item is the one point, well, one million, five thousand dollars for additional funds for IT and dispatch generators. I'm not sure if that one's mine, but I was going to cover it anyway, it's not. You want me to let John cover that one?
It was actually, uh, on my, it was.
Oh, perfect, okay. The purpose of that project is backup power for the public safety department and the government center. There was already three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars approved from the funding, but due to increasing the cost of generators, prices have increased. Um, and, you know, obviously, when you're providing emergency services through dispatch and other, uh, areas, the jail, you have to have power, and it, it's kind of one of those where there's not much of an option, um, for us when it comes to that. And then finally, I, I probably should have started with this one because it kind of piggybacks the district attorney's comments. Five hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred fifty-one for any remaining unspent funds. And it's not necessarily my item, but I wanted to speak to it. Um, since the agenda was posted, this has probably been the most interesting item to staff, and you can see why. You guys know the challenges that we're facing. Your board approved graciously enough to go out for a study once again to see how competitive we are amongst other jurisdictions. And I can tell you, we're not, um, we know that. That's why your board approved the study, and the study hopefully will come back soon. Uh, it sounds like it might have gotten delayed a little bit, but, uh, but this has really generated some interest here. Because one thing that we do have, and as an almost thirty-year employee of the county, I love being a county employee. Um, but one thing that we do have is a retention problem. And it would sure be nice to see if there was a mechanism by which, um, we could offer more incentives. Recently, your board approved, I think for almost all county employees, and I think there's a few groups that might still be lacking, a three percent, uh, raise, you know, after ten years, and, which is great. But when you look at what the study's probably going to come back and show, other jurisdictions are doing that, plus they're doing an additional three to five percent fifteen years, and twenty years, and twenty-five years. And so I really think the ARPA funds are interesting because, um, you have to, uh, obligate by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, you have to spend by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So the ARPA funds aren't necessarily a long-term solution for our staffing issues that we all have across all departments in, in various capacities. Um, but the ARPA funds are definitely a short-term area that your board could take action on. Um, the other interesting thing that I see in the timing of our ARPA agenda item today is I think there's some projects that definitely need to move forward. Um, but we're also within a couple of weeks of the state budget. And we'll know if any of these funds, because I know some of the funds have been requested in the state budget as well, and we'll know if any of those funds get awarded in the state budget and maybe free up more money, um, for the employees. Because, uh, I would, I would definitely be supportive, and I, I dare that you have a hard time finding a department head who doesn't support doing more for our staff. Not only the new hires coming in, uh, but especially the ones that are here day in and day out, uh, doing the work, you know, for your governing body. So, thank you, I'll take any questions if you have.
Any questions from the board? Sheriff, I'm sorry, so, sure. Uh, Sheriff, uh, so the, uh, one I do want to thank, I'm going to stay on my team is for the five hundred ninety-five thousand, um, set aside for employer retention and, uh, kind of settings. I already know this is something that, that can be very attractive, um, to, to, especially with that, what we've heard in the years from, um, funds and your partner on recruiting, DA, um, prosecutors, firefighters, armed officers, and, um, working camp, Jeff, for the nation, all, all those units that fall under the number of public safety. And probably just something. That being said, we know that these monies have to be spent in two years, we're going to have to use it or raise the life. So, um, and you might not have this off topic at all, but when actually you think about a good number, if, if the board had the appetite to grow that five hundred and five thousand, what would be a good target to realistically spend the two plus remaining years? So there has to be better. Um, I can see some opportunities here within these projects the last couple of days where that might be significant. We have to look at the.
The, um, the five hundred dollar one-time bonus, I think, costs around eight hundred thousand dollars. You know, I don't know exactly how much the final amount was that was spent, but that kind of gives you an idea um, on, you know, how far five hundred dollars goes, doesn't go very far. Um, I think there are definitely some, some incentive-type programs that other agencies have offered, you know, a ten thousand dollar retention bonus, reciting bonus, that's, that's factored out over a couple of years, so that way you, you know, you're guaranteed to have the employer, they don't get the money. Um, I think there's definitely some areas, um, of improvement that can happen there for our county. Um, the goal is obviously long-term as well, you know, through the ups and downs of budget cycles. But, uh, you know, I'll, I'll give you an example, supervisor Ragoon, and I spoke, this is a year ago or two years ago, the, the probation chief came in and had the item to reduce, you know, the number of juveniles that get housed. Juvenile crime's going up, just like other, other crimes are going up. But because of budget issues, you know, uh, your board approved reducing the number of juvenile beds from fifty to twenty-five. Ballpark, I, I didn't have the exact numbers, but those are some of the long-term issues that really do need to be addressed because, you know, we're building a brand-new juvenile facility and, and, but we need the staffing for it. And, you know, you got the, you got the adult juveniles coming back to Kings County and that, you know, that the, from the juvenile justice program, and it's basically a realignment from the adult side onto the juvenile side. And so long-term, you know, we, there's going to be more money that has to be spent on staffing um, for the juvenile center to get that ratio back up where we have the fifty beds instead of the twenty-five. Because you can eat up twenty-five beds pretty quickly with the violent crime that we're seeing, you know, here in Kings County. And, uh, you know, you probably have an argument over this, I doubt with any of you, but until we get back to accountability, um, where people are getting in trouble for their actions, we're losing our society, we're losing California. And so I think anything that your governing body can do to ensure, like, okay, we're going to make sure, you know, we fund those areas where we can hold people accountable. I think that's how we, that's how we turn the, the table, and we see what's going on in San Francisco, and we definitely don't want to go down that path.
Sure, and, and I think that would be helpful for us to get there is, um, if, uh, heads for public safety divisions, um, if they were able to put something down on paper, and that said, okay, in the next two years, or whatever the deadline is, to spend the ARPA funds, if the board does make the best amount of dollars, right? Um, I know that, I mean, my goal is to hire five deputies, DA's goal is to hire three or four prosecutors, ten to fifteen case signing bonuses, do that math, right? I need some retention money, do that math, and then we have something to consider. And so, um, and I hope that you can either, I'm not, but, but maybe, uh, maybe the board, um, during discussion, you talked about some different kind of frame versus moving forward today on this issue. And so the last question, uh, and I think it's fair, is that, is you have a number of items here, and if the priority is the retention and the sign bonus, like you said, um, some of your items on here, your GD willing to say, hey, I'll go different amounts of funds and leaving all this ARPA request.
Yeah, that's a great, um, question, because like, I'm, I'm first, but that doesn't mean I want to be funded first. Um, I would rather see more things for our staff and, and more for recruitment than some of the items. Well, there, you know, with me, there, if there's a will, we're the way, we'll figure out how to fund those other items. Um, you know, we'll come back to you for figuring that out. It may take us a couple of years on some of them, but we'll be back. And, and, uh, you know, I'm a big believer in working with our legislative advocates in Sacramento at the federal level to find money, and I know your board is as well. And so, um, uh, if you wiped out all my items and, and you focus solely on what can we do for our staffing, I'd be just fine with that.
Thanks, Sheriff. Sheriff, super good, yes.
Yeah, so kind of along with them, I, you know, this is your item, you're, you're talking about, but the money is tied to everybody. And so, are, are, would you be in support of supporting our DA and her path for retention money and, and getting people to come into our office and, and apply for work?
Yes, and I'll, and I'll just, I'll add a little bit to that is, we know the numbers. We know when people don't apply for jobs, Carolyn can get those numbers for us. We know which jobs people don't apply for, but they're still critical within our government system. And so when you open up a recruitment and you get one or two applicants or no applicants, we know where the issue lies. So, yeah, I would be.
And so, DS, I'm looking at it right now, so this is one-time money, so, uh, do you have a plan ready to go to, to present to HR or admin on what you need?
And while she's walking up, I'll say something. We, I'm an elected official, so I like to talk. We, we can do more, what your board just approved in this pilot program this summer, that's exactly how we should be thinking here in Kings County. You know, we're, we're looking at, okay, half-day Friday, and will it be a little bit inconvenient to the public? Yes, but people get used to what the normal business hours are. And those are more things that I think we should start looking at, the non-cost items where it incentivizes employees, um, to stay and be our employees. And so I think those, those are things that we can, we can look more at.
Sure.
And then, thank you, Supervisor Ruben, for asking me, uh, for my input. I have, my department has a challenge above and beyond most other departments, and that is deputy district attorneys are licensed by the state of California. You have to go to law school, and you have to pass the bar. We are a specialized group of people, and there are just not that many of us here in the Central Valley. Uh, and so we have to be competitive in how we offer our signing bonuses, retention bonuses, and our benefits package. Uh, otherwise, the people are going to go to other district attorney's offices, and I can guarantee you that they're operating a better plan than what we are doing here. So I don't see our county really truly attracting qualified candidates without a twenty-five thousand dollar signing bonus or a twenty-five thousand dollar retention bonus payable in two years. Um, offered September first, and each year fifteen thousand, and the front is ten thousand in the second year. Right now, Tulare County is offering ninety-three thousand dollars for an attorney that is just out of law school. Our deputy district attorney, one position opens up at seventy-one thousand dollars. We don't even start talking to these people until we close that gap of twenty thousand dollars. Furthermore, with more and more people leaving my office, that's more and more burden that the, the remaining attorneys have to bear. And they should be compensated for that, because we're not just attracting people here, we're convincing people to stay. And if we don't compensate people for staying, then they're going to leave. And my fear is, is that if you guys offer a signing bonus of twenty-five thousand, if we don't encourage the people who have already stuck in, dug their hip, healed them, fought for our county, and not offer them an equal bonus, then we're going to see even more people leaving. Because why should they, why should they stay when people who are coming are getting all this extra bonus? Um, but I think we've even began to learn of the discussion with perspective out with this without even offering a twenty-five thousand dollar or more, uh, signing bonus or retention bonus.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Well, I'd be like the supervisor said, it's one-time money. And, uh, Karen, long time, can you give us a date, the deadline, this money has to be gone? So let's say it's two years, right? I think what we're saying is, let's consider, um, a plan within a two-year timeframe to build up the lengths, whether it's fire, the sheriff's duties, to build up the lengths through the signing bonuses first, and then, yes, obviously, some, some retention. But then when this money is gone, right? Um, the goal is that, hey, you now are not short of prosecutors, but there probably isn't money to keep the, that's a hook of conversation to keep ongoing, uh, more retention or more, uh, sign bonus. Saying this is the one time opportunity possibly build up the length, you would be for that?
I would be for that, and, and I could also say that I appreciate this county and wanting to speak into whether or not our salaries and our job distribution are competitive. And the real critical period of time is now and the end of the salary survey. Because I'm moving people faster than I can take them on, and by the time the salary survey is over, I may have half of the staff not be able to staff the forums. And so what we really need to do is give an injection or cash immediately so that we can keep our people and we can attract people.
And we use this money, ARPA funding, right, to fund the, the study. Okay, that's in any of it.
I would suggest if we can continue with everyone's presentation and you can hear the, because one of our recommendations is there is ongoing projects that we have already allocated that are in spending, but whole amounts that you originally have allocated. So one of the recommendations was to use. So one of the recommendations was to use all those funds from those previous projects and then move it into this employee retention, what you have funds that we have. Additionally, I'm working out in finance, your board also took action to set aside some of those ARPA funds from the original allocated funds to go into reserves. So we do have a pot of money that is sitting that could be shifted into other areas if your board chooses to do so.
And so, what's the deadline on that?
December 2024, and it has to be awesome.
I think what the DA is after, for immediate help.
And I would also add that, you know, these, there's a small legal community here in the Central Valley, and they all talk to each other. And so, when you have one county that's offering higher bonuses and more benefits packages, those people from one county is going to draw people from the other county, which I think has been happening here, because there's no, there's no accident that three of my people left to go to another county. It's because they've been promising things, and the people that have left have told other people how great it is and how much more that they get. And what I'm hoping here is, is if you inject this money into my budget now to do signing and retention bonuses, then my people can talk to other folks around in other counties, and we can attract an amazing pool of talent. And that's really my hope, because like the sheriff had said, you know, there's many places in California where we've seen lawlessness in society degenerate into thieving and drug use and violent crime. And what we want is to make Kings County an oasis for that. We want this county to be a county of lawfulness, not lawlessness.
I think it's important that, you know, sheriff has had money, he keeps funds, he goes out and finds these, can bring them in, and then they're terminated, we don't have enough staff to prosecute them. So, and then we got the probation department that takes care of that, and that factor, and all that. So, the three of them work together, I think it's very important. So appreciate Sheriff for how the DA has been coming here, right?
And one final comment, we've been providing information to the courts and the district attorney. We have 10 inmates who have been in jail for three-plus years, two of those inmates almost seven years awaiting trial. We have 60 inmates that have been in jail for more than a year. And so, we're working closely with the new district attorney and the courts to try to address that issue. Because if those inmates are sitting in jail that long, then that means we don't have room for others who are committing the new crimes. And so, you know, it's not a speedy and fair trial if you're sitting in my jail for seven years. I don't care what side of the fence you're on.
Do you think that we should get a state to make this argument to them, or? I mean, I know how our state operates, they don't, they want to arrest people, so.
Yeah.
We could talk later about that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, and I'm glad that you guys set the tone on this discussion, because even though the, that item's the last bullet, but I think it just shows that we're probably here for the time, here through discussions. But, yeah, we'll carry on with the next one.
Thank you Supervisor, well, he's going to be on, I hope to meet the comment as well. Not as legal advisor to the board supervisor, but as the department head of the county council's office. My office experiences the same issues that the DA has experienced, we're currently at 5% on our general law side, of our positions being full. We anticipated that the new attorney would be coming to our office, but that person also chose to go to another location. So we do not have anybody in line, and we're going to be faced the same issues with the legal community here. And so I would ask that you consider the county council. Same, same with the DA's office.
Right, and this is a critical level for us. That was funny, and so, you got this call, you know, they can help us to get some extra money or help us to go gambling with the people, so. But now, I'll make a motion to the probation department.
So the next department, behavioral health, has the next item for $700,000.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is Lisa Lewis from Kings County, be here real help. Can you hear me all right? Okay, I wanted to also just comment on what was just being said. We have a similar problem in behavioral health for licensed clinicians and are not having any applicants. There's about a 40% shortage of licensed clinicians in the Central Valley of California. And we've prepared through our budget and through funding that's come down from Department of Healthcare Services to increase salaries and to provide incentives. So we actually have that already built into our budget, and are not going to need to ask for ARPA funds for that, but we do need the green light to go forward. So the outcome of the class and pay study is really crucial to us, and we're ready to move as soon as that is available to us. Today, what I'm presenting to you is an actual one-time request. This is the ARPA request for $700,000 for the Behavioral Health Department for the Cohen Veterans Clinic Startup Funds. Kings County has the opportunity to work with the not-for-profit Cohen Veterans Clinic, CBN, to bring a Cohen Veterans Clinic to the county. The proposed clinic will be located near NAS Lemoore, the Navy's newest and largest master jet base, and would be the fourth Cohen clinic in the state of California and the 25th in the nation. The other three clinics in California are located in San Diego, Oceanside, and Los Angeles. Cohen Veterans Network was founded by the philanthropist Stephen A. Cohen, who you might know as the owner of the New York Mets. He made a $275 million commitment to launch a network of mental health clinics in April of 2016 to serve veterans and their families. This commitment was prompted by Mr. Cohen's son's service as a Marine in Afghanistan. Startup funding of $700,000 is needed for the clinic, after which Kings County Behavioral Health will contribute Mental Health Service Act funding through PEI Prevention Early Intervention Funds for ongoing support of the clinic in partnership with CBN. Kings County will also work with CBN to find additional resources of funding as demand increases, such as the upcoming RFP NOFA for clinic sustainment funding from a new forthcoming Cal-Vet Competitive Grant Program. This anticipates to provide funding for selected grantees at 100%, 75%, and 50% of operating expenses for the next three years, respectively. This clinic would serve post-9/11 veterans, active-duty service members, their families in our area, and provide service for mild to moderate mental health and family problems in an effort to prevent suicide, homelessness, and more serious mental health problems. With a veteran population in Kings County and surrounding counties of over 60,000 and an active-duty population over 7,000, plus their dependents and family members, the clinic would be expected to serve up to 600 clients per year at full capacity. The post-COVID increase in mental health needs and increased suicide risk has overwhelmed mental health systems. Fleet and Family Services at NAS Lemoore reported a waitlist of services of over 200 people this winter, which has grown recently to over 300 people. The Cohen Clinic will help to meet this growing need for mental health care and will be a life-saving addition to the Central Valley of California. Kristi Lepke, our deputy director, is in chambers this morning, and I'll play a brief video for you. It's just three minutes about CBN. And then Anthony Hassan, the CEO of Cohen Veterans Network, is with us today via WebEx, and we are both available to answer any questions you have. And I very much appreciate your attention to this request. Thank you. Kristi?
Playing the gentle video now. So, Dr. Lewis, you stated that you went increase from 200 clients to 300 clients. Are those clients that were in our system, are they county residents? Do they have affiliation with the county, or are they only here because we provide more services and other accounts?
These are not county behavioral health people. These are veterans and active-duty members who are seeking services through NAS Lemoore Fleet and Family Service.
Okay.
But they are local residents of our community who are either veterans or active-duty, or they're family members. These are not folks that we can serve through our mental health system. That's why we reached out to the Cohen Clinic in order to partner with them to set up something for our military families.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like Kristi's got it. Kristi, should we go ahead with questions, or do you think you're about to pull it?
I think the closest.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
They went overseas and had an extraordinary debt that we need to repay.
I have a third-degree burns to 40% of my body, they're full thickness, so I have skin grafts.
I have really bad vertigo, I'm unable to drive at times.
PTSD, also ventilation burns, it took me about four years to actually be able to talk again.
The transition to civilian life, that was by far the most challenging aspect.
I experienced military sexual trauma. That's where I got my first son. Who would you go to for something like that?
We lost nine guys. I was upset, angry, I felt like I let them down.
The goal of my network is to help pay back that debt and help these veterans get back in society in a functioning way. The catalyst was my son. He enlisted in the Marines, and Robert was in Afghanistan nine, 10 months. I was definitely worried, you know, I mean, anything can happen in war, and so, you know, it's always on your mind. I got lucky. My son came back in great shape, but not everyone's so fortunate. And I think it's important that they get treated to the best care they can get. And that's our goal of our mental health clinics.
Kind of off in my own little world, and don't know what to do from minute to minute, day to day.
Steve Cohen has been involved in PTSD research for a long time. And through that work, he's figured out where the gaps are and what needs to happen to really solve the problem. We're looking for a biomarker of the disease, something that you can take a blood droplet and run on a machine to see whether someone has the disease, the first diagnostic test for PTSD.
One of the things I've learned is, the more rapidly you diagnose somebody with post-traumatic stress, the more rapidly you can treat it. And if you are able to treat it quickly, the longer-term effects are greatly diminished.
We provide mental health care, we provide support with case management that addresses housing and employment. I don't know of any other community mental health system that's doing that for veterans and their families.
The treatment that we're providing to the vets is fully paid for by Cohen Veterans Network. We can take vets who are not happy with themselves and bring them back in society as fully functioning people who feel good about themselves, and I think that's incredible.
What allows me to be positive is not just the hope, but it's the love you experience in the Cohen Veterans Network. We will love you through your pain until you learn how to love yourself, and then in turn, you can love others.
I'm going 100% to make this happen.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you for your patience. I thought that was really important to see. And Anthony Hassan is with us today by WebEx, if you have any questions about Cohen Veterans Network.
Seth, gentlemen, you was here about six months ago, and you presented.
Hi, Chairman, yes, this is Anthony. I met you last time, about six months ago, we had the conversation, I did the presentation. Yeah, I really look forward to growing and expanding in Kings County, and I'm glad we're here today. Thanks.
Does the board have any questions? To start off by saying I took the presentation about six months ago. And the people that were in the room were reps from all over the county, including the base that provides services, mental health services for veterans. And I won't say we normally compete against each other, but they're all from different companies and organizations. And they were all in favor of this. And what I liked about it is, Mr. Cohen is putting his money, millions of dollars out, and didn't even have to look at Kings County, and to have this opportunity here based on $700,000 to have veterans, to reach an argument, make the easier argument that veterans as well were impacted during the pandemic, and that they would be to get treated and some tactic. That this right here is one heck of an opportunity that we want to see again. One of the other things I learned from that time with him is that if you can come to this clinic, and correct me if I'm wrong, sir, you come to this clinic, right? Let's say you're actively using something that's put it out, like pilots, right? If you're actively piloting, and you're having issues with gas bleeding, substance abuse, you're not going to want to go to this scene on the base. Now, that's in your pocket, and maybe your flight status is at the risk as you let and you ask for help. But if you come to this clinic, this doesn't go back to the base. Therefore, somebody who is worried about seeking help can come seek help. And then when you learn about the long delays, I mean, urgent access and more for active-duty veterans, man, it takes six months to a year from the point. Obviously, the other thing that I like is that it's, instead of opening up the whole, to the whole population of veterans, and I don't mean this in an ignorant way, I mean this personally, they start serving in post-9/11, and we already know from post-9/11 that there's a lot of veterans there who suffer from PTSD and suicide rates. And so, as we go through, as we go through this list, I'm a guy who's been on it, is just doing the math on something that could be supported today. And this is one of the items that could be supported today with these one-time funds, because it's just going to trigger. Anybody else have a question to the board?
Just thank you to Chairman Vallet for those comments. My brother is active duty, and he's also a pilot. And so, exactly what you said, it's kind of the pilot's credo that they all wait till they're done with their career to address much, because that can put their brains. So, anything we can do that's in support of the veterans and particularly their mental health, I'm supporting. Thanks for your advice, thanks for your brother's service. Anybody else today before we move on to the next one?
Okay, anything you'd like to close with as we move on to the next one?
So the next item is $300,000 for agenda software for the Department of Health's Office. Currently, the Office has an app for to produce the agenda item, and this would And this would, with these funds, we intend to use a RFP and seek some proposals to get an agenda software. This would also be a allow us to formally archive everything electronically. So when members of the public are seeking maybe an item, minutes, they are able to go through the website and access that themselves instead of going through our certain point's office. When COVID hit, we had members of the public coming seeking agenda items and at times weren't able to produce those records immediately as they requested here, they were able to access it all online.
Well, I'm sorry, what was the call, man?
Three hundred thousand.
You said it was three hundred thousand.
Just for clarification, it's not just for my office, it's for all staff from the county that would have really put items on your agenda.
Okay, any questions on this one? We'll move on to the next one.
The next item is two hundred sixty, sixty thousand for COVID initial associated costs. So this was, we created a payroll code to track all costs associated to the pandemic. This was a grizzly, but to keep track of that. And since then, we have wrapped that before we have spent two hundred and sixty, six hundred thousand in associated costs, initiative costs. And so we are seeking to use those funds to recruit those funds.
Well, thank you, Chairman. This can come out and you have to go on to the next one?
Yes, the next one was actually the one million for the additional funds for the IT is generated by the sheriff actually covered. So if there are any questions for that, for the leopard. Not including the budget.
What would you think would be a better opportunity besides ARPA funds? What would you actually do to give those funds to the general?
The general. It is a county cost, the entire county, so we will go to the general. The next one is thirty thousand for the first part, I'm using an air conditioning unit. The project is a five, an air conditioning unit. Again, if we do not use, this would be a general cost. This is a one-time investment with annual maintenance possibly forward. And if there's any questions, we can have a little voice here for the next specific item.
Yeah, if you have a question, listen, I know that this, the units, thirty years are, they're a year of meaning. So as, as he ran it and serves, right? Maybe there was never a plan or as, as that we started losing out on that and knowing that ice fans coming, there's, there's no plan or let me start. There's thirty years later, it sets down, and you gotta go find them.
Yeah, we either have to come back, morning German members of the Board, Jim Henderson, filling in for intended. Yeah, so we either have to use our, you know, supply and materials or S I M G account. There's probably hundreds of units throughout the county, so we can't save money up to attack those as well. So we, kind of each year, we target, you know, handful of units that we look like they need to be replaced or when they get to the critical point where they're going out and they bring the refrigerant stuff. It's why we put it on where it are. And this one, it has the R twenty-two refrigerant, which has been banned and can't be purchased anywhere.
So are you just replacing the unit or doing more than that?
The whole unit, just the unit itself.
On top or the ground?
On top. So it has, and then also, you know, it'll service the visitors that come. There's just historical artifacts in there that the time and control of, you know, preserve that all the days.
I have a lot of air conditioners in about three months, but that's a little high, thirty thousand. Is that just covers more than just the unit or?
Yeah, we've got a kind of a little price on it, and that's where it's at. It's a five-ten unit. And then doing work at home is completely different here. Everything's DIR, in wage, it's, we have to run a bid.
Would you get like eight thousand for it? I'd pay between five and eight. You've been having that fascinating, but I haven't seen it before.
And if we got to bid one contractor, it shows us, I mean, we're at the mercy, you know, hopefully they sharpen the pencils for it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that. Thank you, Congressman. Thank you, Susan.
The next item is an additional five hundred thousand for the additional funds for the porch upgrade. This request is for additional funding that was already allocated to the project. The original request was originally six hundred fifty thousand, so the total cost for the project would be one point one million, five hundred thousand. And if you have any specific questions, we actually have our architect here, Lauren. The project is literally underway. We think that the project would be completed hopefully by the end of the year.
I think it's obviously funding there and Catherine's work very much honored as well as the board. And then the pandemic, we saw how we weren't ready in places that we sat and wouldn't have operated. It's something too. I'd like to see a drawing of what it's going to look like or some kind of model. Not today, say that you sent them.
The same one.
Okay. Any questions? That the amount on that for today was five, three hundred today.
Five hundred thousand for this, for additional plans. We actually have on another agenda that actually warrants the contract.
Mr. Chair, I think you gotta go back up once because I think you missed the fifty thousand for public works.
Oh. My apologies. So the fifty thousand for public works online portal for reservations. So this would allow the public to submit processing approach, permit, application, transportation, permission, reservations for services online. This will eliminate the need for individuals to come into our office or pay for applications. That is fifty thousand dollars. If there's any questions.
Yeah, let me do it.
All right. At this time, I will pass it over to Wendy from Human Services Agency to about eight hundred ninety thousand for the low barrier.
Good morning, Chairman. Members of the board. Wendy Osikoff, Director of Human Services. Just, we were here in February, so just to give you a quick review, primarily for the public. But in two thousand nineteen, this board established the Kings County Homeless Collaborative in an effort to make sure we were coordinating our efforts around homeless and housing issues. That collaborative set as one of the top priorities, the establishment of the development of a low barrier shelter in this community, as you know, we do not have a floor. Also, in two thousand twenty-one, the Kings County Grand Jury made a recommendation in that a low barrier shelter be established in the county of Kings, and there was a need for it. The county responded that that would remain a primary effort as well. In February, let me back it. So Casey, we have had multiple efforts to identify and try to find location. They've not always borne fruitful. We've got the pandemic in the middle of that, and so we have really not made much progress on that effort. However, recently, K C O has developed a plan for an integrated service center, which will include an expanded food bank, a centralized kitchen, housing navigation, low barrier shelter. Mr. Garner was here with me in February. We presented on that, we presented this project and seeking the board's support in a request for a federal earmark. Given the federal budget negotiations and even our state budget, I think that our likelihood of earmarks seems to be decreasing with each, each passing week. However, this board did vote to support that and on the condition that we look for a location in Hanford. Mr. Garner has worked actively since that time on a location and have him give a brief update on those developments. So I'm, I'm here today asking for eight hundred ninety thousand. I know that seems like a lot, but this is a multimillion dollar project. It is three percent of the ARPA funding. And we have, you know, I hate putting our projects against each other. We've got, we've put a lot of money out to the business community. I think that was well deserved. We've put a lot of money towards departments, projects. I think those are all needed. I fully support the efforts from recruitment and retention. I have some of my same struggles with staff that have requirements for MSWs. We've not put a lot towards the most needy in our community. So I think three percent of what's available is a reasonable ask. It is specified in the ARPA language that is one of the particular projects that should be invested in or could, could be invested in. And that while the pandemic impacted, I'm reading straight from the language, millions of American households and businesses, some of its most severe impacts fell on low income and underserved communities. They go on to enumerate specific projects that are eligible. That includes food banks and services for homeless individuals, including temporary residences for people experiencing homelessness. On May twenty-sixth, that was just last week, I know that, I believe the board got copies. I know as a county, we've not had an opportunity to respond, but the grand jury issued their two thousand twenty-three report on homelessness and once again is recommending that we attend, prioritize low barrier shelter and support, let me quote it, continue to look for and appropriate for a low barrier shelter and institute K C O's plan for such a low barrier shelter scheme. I, in the interest of time, I won't go over date. I went over that in February. The need is evident in this community. The recent point in time came out for two thousand twenty-three and our population, the need continues to grow. And as I shared in February, you know, we are in the process of closing down Project Runkey, and that has provided some level of sheltering in this community, but that's going to go down to zero in the coming months. And HSA is a supporter of this project, and I'm going to have Mr. Garner give, have a brief update, but we also have some supporters from the Homeless Collaborative and the audience that we want to share just a list of others in support or.
Before we get there, the concerns that I have is that when you can't even cut the marks, right? You presented how you're prepared to be far before you fix them. Armable kitchen and discussions, let's not go that route. And to come back, we found the location, but as you're coming back to it, you know, thousand that you're saying that you don't have a kitchen.
I would like Mr. Garner to provide that update because there is some information on that.
Here's the other thing, it's a positive. So as you pointed out, yes, the board's advisors did make this holiday request, the federal office, state office, there's two months of money there for this money to come from. And so my drive here this morning, I reached out to Chuck, a white state representative, and his work that they're giving second, I was sending it to Todd's office. And he says to, really, that Senator has indicated this is fair priority acts, okay, in the state budget, and we know they all, they all get their priority. And so you're looking good on, on some funding here that where we have a small amount of money here, you're looking really good to get funded in the other. And you think also that with the time that we have, the time that the board has to spend this money, some of the letters that Sarah Martinez put out, that I think that there's a timeline here for the board to have a discussion to hold off on this project because the state budget, whether or not you get state budget funded here. And if you don't get the money from the state, there's the time to kind of talk about some funds here. But I just want to put that out there. Some builders and conservatives, some colleagues, some funding for this project before we allocate this money today and then find out. But yeah, we'll get it on the state budget.
And this is a volatile subject when it talked to the board member, because we've asked our staff for multiple years, you need to do the late work in the community and get the community support on the issue, not nothing on our shore, that meeting where we're to feel that harassment has voted out of the direction. So I would ask you to do some more homework and go out and get the community support, find a place, get, give involvement, finding money that's a big deal, you got money, you've got to have a place because we're the ones that live here. We're the ones that go out to eat dinner, and we can't even go to dinner sometimes because people harass us because of the decisions we had to make because we're on the spot. So it makes it really difficult for us to live in our community, to vote off if we're people come here that don't live here, put these projects in our backyard. So the last one was the Del Point project, it wasn't your project, it was Beagren Hill, it wasn't homeless, but no one did the homework, no one upgraded the website, and we paid the guys for it. But that's where I stand today, and I'm a little tired of all that. It was time you guys not do any work and put us on the spot. When I go to dinner here tonight and take my family out, it's hard to, you're like, chill. My family in one building in your town because of what you guys didn't do last time. So it's already been three years, so I have a hard time building a rain in a home of mine just for that reason. And I supported, I supported some of that project, and a lot of them done here. I'm living around the community. We did the hotel on, in Greenville. It's empty, there's no one, no one working, no one did nothing. Even living on COVID, living on, you know, the docking shortage for the product from China. But you gotta understand our position, you need the community support because now, the support for me is minimal. I went to the city county court, and I got cussed by a homeless person outside of Gazi. And the guy tried to keep me from going inside. I thought he had a knife. And then he was, he was drunk, stolen, stolen. I understand it's important to do that. We need to get things finished, but at the same time, you have to support our decision by the, being a bit here, be, better community supports us or they kick us out.
Understood. If you give Mr. Garner an opportunity, I think there has been a lot of labor. We have public, our, the Homeless Collaborative minutes, updates on these plans are public. There has been a lot of outrage. You'll read this, but this is a list of agencies and entities that are in support of this project. So I do think there's a lot of labor. There is some development on the site, but it's his project. I don't think we can speak to that.
Let me, let me, before you go to your, to your, fairness to you, you're the only department head that reached out to me and said, hey, CEO advisor, I'm gonna have a project for you on Tuesday. I think you called it Thursday. And I do appreciate it, but you gave him the heads up, spoke to our CEO and a lot of the C I S we've been, just said, and, and my comments. Learning, getting those updates on Thursday or Friday, you know, puts me in a position to where I believe, again, when you're not prepared today, and I'm happy to hear Mr. Garner, I hope he's brief, unless he says, hey, we have a location at twelve oh nine X Y Z. If you can't do that, then please be brief, because he does, he does put us on the spot. And I'm in the mindset, just already knowing that you're looking good at the state level to get the money and, and the board can give an updated letter of support for your project to Senator Todd, Pro Ten, everybody up there, one more nap. You do that on my own letterhead as well, right? But today, I'm looking at eight hundred ninety thousand, and I'm going, well, there's some, I'd love to move that over to the pot for retention and recruiting bonuses and also to tie that support of some of our employees, captain, liar. I think that actually might get us on the way to get something that's urgently needed first, something that's still been drafted.
I understand. I appreciate that. I, I would, I, I was, I was a secret. Acting C E O Martinez had indicated earlier that any unused funds would be earmarked back towards recruitment and retention. And so should the state funding come through at a higher level than we anticipate, then that's certainly something that could be available if it was designated. You can sit on it till a determination is made. My concern is that the, the state earmark request will not fully fund the whole project. It might fund part of it. And so we are hobbling together a variety of sources.
If you wanted to worry, we said it in assembly, that's what we did with the sheriff on our successful, trying to bring back millions of dollars in holidays, but that's, that's where the money is, and that's how, that's how you have to go give it because you're here for us, and that's respectful. You're doing a job, I can tell you, in Sacramento, door to door. You have Mr. Garner and just a couple of units on the road there.
There's another question I had, so I.
That's another question I had. So I emailed you, I think January fourth, about a city that had put together a ordinance saying it's the only going to be homeless. If you refuse service uh to be homeless and if you refuse the services, you have to leave their jurisdiction. Would this facility help get that through? I don't want to house people. I want to get people help. They don't want help. They gotta get out.
I can give the layman's answer to that. The sheriff might be in a better position or or Chief Sever. Um, the my understanding is that if you don't have a location to send them, you cannot enforce that.
Good.
And so because we don't have a shelter or a service, a a navigation center established in this county, you're not able to enforce.
There are there are some locations to send people. We just worked with Mr. Garner, the KCEO, and Michael Dell, one of the city of Portland. But there were some that want to pass for the um tents and cabins and John Peter Park. So I was there that morning, six in the morning, and I watched um the hoof in the phone. Six in the morning was on Joey Cox from KCEO. We appreciate you know, um there was uh some other reps there that um were telling the homeless people, um come here, they they have they set up on the spot at the park. Uh, here's the vouchers, kind of get signed up. We have your Amtrak tickets, gray buses, anywhere you want to go. And we're prepared to shelter you on taking a handful right now. All those people there, and I'm saying it was about a hundred people, I only saw one person take them up. And I know that because I walked with that gentleman, he was about, and he was lonely, he had the hells on him, we weren't able to step on a timer of them um at the Amtrak stage, you know, before. He was he was getting everything in mind in mind of leaving. So you know, again, like Super Boom said, that we want to help people, want to be helped. And I, because I talked to those folks and they're saying we got nowhere to go. And I'm saying you can do this. Lady's here to see her. Mr. Um.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Public Staff, Jeff Garner, Executive Director of KCAO. So I do appreciate uh Wendy bringing this proposal um before you. I know there's always a lot of tough decisions here. In terms of the property, we do realize it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing, right? Like people have supported this concept. They come out and say, we like what you're wanting to do. Tell us where. And so we are actually at a moment now where we actually made a formal offer on a piece of property this morning in Hanford. It's actually right on the border of Hanford and Kings County. Uh, I know the direction of the board supervisors in February was to find something in Hanford, and we have found something in Hanford. And we do feel it's a location that is um further away, uh further enough away from the community, but also close enough for um individuals to access. A big part of this project is going to be our food bank. Our food bank alone serves thirteen thousand unduplicated individuals each year. Uh, so if you combine the food banks and Schleise Kitchen and the uh low barrier shelter, we project to serve about fifteen thousand individuals per year. That's ten percent of our county population. So this project to us, we feel it has a lot of support and we do want to go out in the community. And we do want to be completely transparent as to what we're gonna do and where we're gonna do it. We are just in the process right now of negotiating these price details. And hopefully we have something in place um over the next few weeks where we actually have a a deal that we both agreed on, both us and and the seller. The seller didn't list the property, so we are protecting his privacy as well, but once we get his response back to our offer, then we do feel like we can actually pinpoint the exact location in terms of what we're looking for.
To tell her.
No, but I would ask that you felt whichever supervisor left then, you didn't have to, because the last time this happened, we gave behavioral health an opportunity to go on to public outreach, they purchased a property and we had phones a little for three days. And people we know, people we valued and trusted, people who spoke for us, people who support our campaign were pissed.
Yeah.
And it was not that we had no clue. So he didn't even support us at the same time when he did that.
No, exactly. I have been in conversation with Supervisor Robinson. It would be considered his area. Uh, I've also been in contact with Vice Mayor uh Mark Harris, who is here today, and I would like to see if he could have a minute or two to share um with the supervisors here because we are getting the support of the city of Hanford and we really do appreciate that. And they are seeing the the needs in their community.
Supporting.
Uh, they are looking at that. And so I'll let him talk about that.
But it's not in Hanford, Steve.
It isn't.
It isn't in Hanford. Yes.
Well, Mr. Garner, are you uh, what you have, I don't know, have the board backing up this project a few months ago? Maybe your staff are obvious and uh DC has set up a game to go there and log for some fun and the same thing with um uh this company, you do Sacramento.
Yes, we have. And we actually, I was up in Sacramento two weeks ago knocking on doors, um asking, begging, doing everything I can.
To be a senator.
I did, yes. And so she is definitely prioritizing it as her number one choice. Uh, but we've also talked to Congressman Valdeos and Senator Padilla. So we are finding support from our elected officials as well. Uh, and so total, we have about fourteen million dollars out in requests, and those are all requests at this time. Uh, nothing has been landed. The only thing that has landed to us is a food bank grant that we received uh two years ago for one point four million. Uh, but we need close to ten to twelve million dollars to complete this project.
Mr. Chairman, I just got it off. Uh, for starters, thanks, Jeff. No, you didn't. You have communications, but so that. But I do want to just say in general, yeah, it goes back to the North Shore project, goes back to a few things, but canvassing, canvassing is our shortcut. You know, I found out about those earmarks. I I think I got my reports on a Friday. I read them on a Saturday. So I spent all day Sunday canvassing. I don't know what canvassing is, but but I know how to knock on doors and I know how to talk. And and uh and we had that conversation last time, and I appreciate the appearances that it's not going to be in our moment because our moment's so small. We'd be a huge impact on it. But it's staff's responsibility to canvas and talk to people and get a feel for people. A lot of times we put the cart before the horse. We do all this planning. We get all this money, do all these things. But we don't talk to the people on the ground, the people that didn't actually implement, the people that live there whose homes could be devalued because of some of these projects. So anyway, thanks for the dialogue. Bless you.
Yes, definitely. And I'd like to invite Vice Mayor Mark Harris up to just to share the city of Hanford's perspective. And then maybe we can give Chief Sever as well to touch upon the law enforcement aspect of this type of service then. Mark.
Morning, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mark Harris, Vice Mayor of Hanford. Um, I'll be, I promise to be very brief. Um, just to give you a little background on the city of Hanford. So the city of Hanford is supportive of KCOA, um had a great partnership with their organization for many, many years. And we're looking to continue that partnership with these uh food bank navigation center. Um, and so what we have done as a city is we have uh earmarked uh two hundred thousand dollars for the next five years, so a total of one million dollars um to uh the CBDG money uh to assist with the uh I guess I would call more sticks and bricks. Okay, the city's not looking to get into the business of unsheltered. That's why we we have the collaborative uh uh commitment from others to get involved in that. And I understand you have a lot of things on your table today to evaluate, and we totally understand uh the importance of that, but um I want you to know that we as a city of Hanford aren't supportive of that. Uh, as a council, we've made that decision back in uh March of this year. Um, so we earmarked that money set aside as you were asking about funding. So there is one million in funding set aside for the city of Hanford to help. Um, currently, there's approximately at point in time, uh point in time count, uh four hundred seventeen homeless in the in the Kings County area. Um, three hundred and thirteen of those are in the city of Hanford itself. Uh, so it is a it is a community thing. It is a collaborative effort, and I thank you for the input that you provided. Uh, we outreach, state support, state funding, um, you know, canvassing, those things are all important. And like Mr. Garner said, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? I guess we could have that discussion, but um we are, we are moving forward and uh looking for support. So I'm just hoping to put it on the consideration. So.
And that number is not two years ago.
Correct, thirty-three percent. Yes, in overall. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Vice Mayor, I appreciate your time. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Board Supervisors, Chief Sever, Mayor of Police. Uh, we are also in support of uh Kings Community Action Organization and their proposal um for the city of Hanford. Uh, having been in law enforcement now for twenty-seven years, I I I've been, I've seen the entire thing. I've seen it from when I knew every single homeless person on the street to where we are today. And what we are doing right now is not working. And I know there's a lot of people that will come out here and say, you know, if you build it, they will count. But the problem is, is Hanford is the epicenter of our homeless problem in Kings County, but it is not a city of Hanford problem. It's a problem for the entire county. Uh, we are impacted because we have all the services available. So we're impacted by Amtrak, by the hospital, by the jail, by the King's Behavioral Health, by any service that they want. All they've got to do is make one trip to Hanford and now they're homeless in it. So it's not just a city of Hanford problem. It's a county by problem. And what we're doing right now isn't working. Um, we do not have the ability to to enforce the way we want to enforce, like like Doug Bourbon was saying, because we don't have a shelter there. And also the other communities around us or counties do have a shelter. So it's not like they'll kick them here because they don't have one. We won't be the only one with this type of thing. But this is never going to be an easy decision. No matter where you put this in the county, it's going to be by somebody. And this is always going to be one of those decisions that is, they don't want it in their back door. But the problem is, is the next homeless counting time, the homeless uh counting time survey, point in time survey. It's going to show you that from twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, one year, uh the street homelessness in Hanford has increased one hundred percent. From a hundred and roughly thirty individuals to um to two hundred seventy. And it's not sustainable. And just like you got accosted on the street, there are many other people getting accosted on the street. And the homeless are getting wiser and wiser. And so there are certain people that when my heart team goes out and contacts them, they will not, they'll just tell them, we know the Boise decision. We know what we can and can't do. Leave us alone. If we have some of these shelters available, uh shelter available, we can do a stricter proportion than we're currently doing right now. And it's frustrating for my department. It's frustrating for my officers. I got a complaint just earlier this week um from a from an individual. Basically, he's not happy with the service that that we've provided. And I'm like, there's nothing else we can do. I'm I'm a law enforcement officer. I don't want to deal with this at all. I mean, this is not what I went to school for. There's exactly zero hours at the academy on how to follow situations. But we're left to deal with it uh because we do our best to handle it. But um it it's a difficult decision. I don't envy your decision or what you have to do, but it's never going to be a popular decision.
Can I ask you, Mr. So it's uh, I believe, oh, thank you for your time. Thank you for being here, sir. Uh, so going back to your law enforcement side, right, we also know maybe in sweet to the the there is a final man in the homeless population. So um I think there's something to be said to the money and some resources that we had to force today that um we could be um totally in the community as well. Um, I mean, we had more officers on patrol and we have secuers to deal with the crimes, not only the general population, but the homeless. Which going back to a part in Portland, a tent sitting that was in our community for the third year. Um, speaking to Chief Short and Sue Ryan, members of City Council, we had um a woman out there, right, there was a woman that was killed, there were several deaths. We um we know that there was a homeless uh gentleman who was strong armed. We had a homeless attendant that was charged with home run. We first picked up a tenant to have a tent up in this park, pretty much down there. Um, it's the subside that that's uh drug dealers in Hanford were coming to courtroom home first in the bus. Picking up the homeless population who had substance abuse problems, bringing them to Hanford. Partied them all day and then dropped them back in Portland, broke through once in a while. They they can't partner there um to buy themselves drugs. So talking to officers in courtroom and going back to the start of the conversation with you. Officers are frustrated that not only is there not a shelter, right, but there's also the problem. Why keep picking the same person up? We cited them. Um, we have the surveillance on the drug transactions and meth transactions that took place that may have parts of work, but why keep citing them if you're just going to bring them? Arrest them, cite them, and then they're trying to part of that.
Well, it it truly is a joint effort. One thing always impacts the other. But one area that we are severely lacking is in a navigation and a shelter. I mean, we have, despite having all the resources that for our county in Hanford, we don't have enough resources in Hanford. We don't have a one stop shop where they can go. We need to be where they are or bring them to where they are so they can impact, so they can, you know, get to other services. Um, so we can try to help those that are willing to be helped. Um, but of course, there's a criminal aspect and humidity and homeless. It's it's an issue of drug addiction and mental mental health. But you know, if you we can't, it has to be done across the board. If we just leave, we never do something over here, then I mean, we're still not going to be able to take the charges.
I'm not thinking from a perspective that we're homeless, homeless people are like some of the people that I described. With the stuff that is actually, it's happened with Portland, me as well, like my agenda. And how do we need to deal with it? Why are all these people being forced out of the park today? So questions ahead and expectations given um to prepare me for this.
Yeah, but we're we're supportive because we just believe that we need a place to send the homeless so that we can start doing a stricter proportion like Doug Bourbon says. Um, but this is never going to be a fun or an easy decision because it's going to impact other people's lives.
And and the homeless need to be accountable to us. The most stacked things that are said, people working on our account. We have to show up for work on time every day or we get fired. We have to follow rules, we have to follow, it's being limited. We draw our, we all kind of rule that to follow. They're not accountable anymore. So once we have this homeless shelter, it's time to make them be accountable. They have been accounted all the time or they have to get out.
I can totally agree with you, but we cannot do that without a shelter.
I have to, you have a bank to run your business. You miss payment, you lose your business. You're on the homeless street. You're you're taken care of constantly, move around. I mean, I don't want that lifestyle, but they gotta do, they gotta have some effort themselves too. So if a lot of the shelter help with getting people back on track, getting their mind cleared up so they can make good choices, I'll be in support of it. So so then, there's got to be a good time to play, not just built. I don't want to see a, you know, a visual from the community of all your shelterers hanging out there, you know, that having sex, doing whatever they do or drugs. That has to stop. The drugs have to stop.
Yeah, I I mean, that that's the whole problem, I think, with, you know, what the stimulus spending to begin with. Is I think they made this problem exponentially worse by not by never addressing the the core issues. And the core issues many times aren't drug addiction, which also sometimes can cause mental illness and other issues. When you legalize all those things, you give somebody no incentive to get out of that situation. And I I think our homeless are reaching a new low because we're not, they're not dealing with those core issues. But a navigation center will give us the resources to start dealing with those core issues.
Sir, Roger. Cash.
Yeah, uh, just to fill the space. Uh, I uh had a fair amount of experience with the homeless. Uh, I have a furniture store in Fresno. And uh they they come to my store a couple times a week. And so uh staff's afraid and rightfully so. Uh, retired officer Johnson up there told me at one point that about eighty, and I don't know if these figures are accurate or not, but it gives us an idea. About eighty percent of the homeless have bipolar schizophrenia and about eighty percent of that is due to methamphetamines and other drugs. I don't know if that's a fair estimate or not. Uh, he said a good majority of their time is spent like you're saying, chasing the homeless from one corner to the other corner. Um, is that also what's going on here? What percentage of your officers' time would you say is better?
And that's another good point too, is the city, he cites the money that we would invest in this. The city also dedicates two officers just to this issue. Um, so they dedicate another four hundred thousand dollars a year that those two officers are just dealing with homeless on a everyday basis. But you're, that is what we see. Um, you know, typically, um, you know, the the point in time survey is, it's a good tool, but it's kind of inherently inaccurate as well. And so we have several issues that we we see a little bit differently when my officers are on the street. We're seeing what you see. We mainly see the ones that don't want to get off the street uh that have mental health and substance abuse issues on a regular basis. Um, and having talked to them personally as well, um, there's a certain amount of freedom that comes from being homeless. You don't have to get up in the morning. You don't have to go to a job. You don't have to pay your taxes. You don't have to pay your child support. And and that's a little bit of what it's trying to pull them out of that situation and make them productive members of society. Uh, we used to be able to do that, a little bit of stick and carrot with making arrests, but we don't get people anymore to come up to me. And I used to get people all the time to come to me and say, hey, I don't know if you remember, but you arrest me. And I used to get people all the time to come to me and say, hey, I don't know if you remember, but you arrested me back in the day. Well, thank you so much. Because that arrest turned my life around. I realized I've hit my new low. Well, you know what? People aren't getting arrested anymore. So they're just hitting new lows. And unfortunately, I think some of them are so broken, I'm not sure what we can do for them, from what we're seeing on the street.
Thanks, sir. Your comments are, I fully appreciate them, capital. While we're talking in this small circle, I mean, after that, the board has shown a lot of compassion over the years to the homeless. This is that we have, and I would say that, considering the last thirteen years, we've certainly always found it. And I've seen in taskbooks that show their compassion, especially down in Canada. To homeless population, the governor's set aside millions of dollars. Uh, it is the state budget for, that we have to cover with the homeless community. And I think it looks good, bring back some state money home to help with this, but I'm conscious. And in fact, it's happened. I mean, we've had a different conversation.
I, I will say, you know, I can, as a law enforcement officer, I mainly deal with the problems they cause. But as a person, they're my brothers and sisters. And I very much am concerned about them getting the help they need.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the next project.
We got approximately nine more projects?
Eight.
Oh my goodness, but it's supposed to be right, it's about taking like five minutes.
Uh, let's go through these nine in a little bit.
So next project is sixteen thousand from JTO, I think you have this.
And Sheriff, the board, uh, this fellow John Fran office. Uh, Trillith is actually on her way right now, of course, she can be here right now, so I'm here to speak on her behalf. Uh, as you were speaking, you know, regarding the homeless situation, that is, one of our requests is regarding. Falls into that category where we're asking for door access. I mean, uh, I mean, key, key of the century into our office. Um, with COVID, a lot of business closures and um, individuals have been, of course, impacted with increased individuals into our office. Um, seeking services, there's a lot of stress, of course, on these individuals seeking job search services. Um, a lot of emotional uh, issue and health, mental health issues that have been coming through also. Um, so staff have, you know. Felt like they haven't had the protection that they have needed in uh, currently. With their current system, which is just a basic, you know, lock system into the office. We have did some re, reconfiguration of the office in the past two, three years. Trying to make it a little bit more secure, but we really feel with the key of the century, it'll help us. To get staff into the office faster and also track those individuals that are actually coming through the doors. So we have had individuals, uh, homeless individuals and other individuals. That have, you know, uh, come into the lobby and actually created its habit for us, where we have all the police department. And um, I'm software, I've got, they're investing issues too. Uh, first and foremost, it is to serve the public and the customers though. So uh, that is our first um, request, which is sixteen thousand dollars. The second one um, is in regards to rewiring our office. Uh, about, once again, about three years ago, we did some reconfiguration of the office. In regards to uh, trying to streamline it and deal with a little more tech, so we weren't completely wireless. Um, unfortunately, it has hindered us. Uh, with a overloaded wifi system and we have had a lot of software issues or computer issues where. We have, I mean, phone calls even, I mean, phone calls are being dropped, businesses, customers, um, are uh. We've had, our, our systems have shut down, ours has shut down, we've lost connection altogether. Um, and so this has led to delays in terms of applications or services to the public. And to the current customers that we have involved in our system, even in our general career center. In terms of the public that comes in, you know, does resumes, job search. Uh, sometimes the systems are down and we can't get them up and running, and so we call IT, we just reboot it and. Uh, we have had uh, I T C L a few times to uh, assist us in trying to upgrade, you know. To get a little bit faster speed or, or less um, shut down volume, but unfortunately. We're at the point where we're asking for rewiring, hardwiring the system. Um, which is going to cost us about twenty thousand dollars total. Which in turn will allow us to offer faster and more services uh, to our businesses and to the public.
Just from uh, rigging uh, Friday. Actually, the project, obviously, uh, connections, uh, pandemic related impacts. The uh, especially tech out. Many people kind of made it out. It's homeless who said, we're kind of getting out, uh, your staff, um. And, and they started enjoying, and then we talked about the rewire. Obviously, yes. Between the uh, the vast amount of small business funding. We did, and one we did in twenty twenty, or twenty twenty one, we helped us get out of that one. Of small business owners. I want to do those parents' service, we'll say thank you for that. And there's a good project, so I can support it. Today, anybody else have any comments on this? Next one?
Just a brief one, I'm gonna first ask. Met with you, yeah, about, I don't know, three weeks ago or so. So on my way in, I was greeted by your, your uh, homeless workers, so.
We get that daily because we're all, we're all obsessed, so, and, and they seem to be rotating. Uh, we're getting more and more, as the people, you know, staying, you know, because we're located downtown.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ronchek. You have another one? No, just those two. Thank you.
Good morning, I'll try to read. Um, the first project for you is uh, one point five million, officer, three sixty five licenses for a three year period. You can predict that, so we don't worry about that deadline, if that's a question. Uh, three sixty five allows the county to respond to our citizens' needs, especially during a pandemic. Uh, it has tools to collaborate, meet chat, and talk all built in and ready to engage the public and others at points. It also gives them the ability to, to basically do like dispatch teams and the person on the other end of the. Office three sixty five is the person that schedules them each, but that will be to talk to the public or, so they see. Any questions on?
I lost track, you said, yeah, which, which uh, which?
Office three sixty five?
Yeah, what, we got one down?
Oh, one point five.
Okay, I have another, my question there is um. So the last round of ARCA funding, you brought this issue forward and you got a lot of money, right? So to get it out for six five and license, so now you're asking for more money for three more years. To license um, this product, right?
Yes.
During the pandemic, you were, you were working this out with the budgets and the money that you were getting. Um, for licensing on this technology, tech developing. You've been here, obviously, for, obviously, many years to get money for licensing, so. What are you going to do after ARCA funds? Get exhausted?
It's a big question. We have built this into our budget for next year. And uh, it is a, a big increase for our budget. It is something that will have to be dealt with in the budget sooner or later. Um, our, our options were to either go with. Gmail, Google's offering, which is the same price that we got at the office three sixty five. Where our office three sixty five also includes the Microsoft, so there's savings later. Because Microsoft's going to no longer support the on-prem version of email. So, um, you know, one way or another, we had to go to something that was. File-based system. Uh, so, we decided that as can we do a lot of office three sixty five. It is a very large hit to the general fund. And this was just a way that we have.
So one part is the first exhausting, we are only, I think, we're still getting on that, covering.
Unless the department's.
What would you get outside funding from? Or, or wherever you have any patents?
We just charge the partners, we're not going to say that, we charge part of costs, it's spread out to all the different county departments.
So you had to be, continue that with this request and too.
We could, we could.
That's what I'm saying, that uh, this is a large kind of thing there, that came to the top on Friday here. Um, can you ask, thank you, anyone else have a question?
Alright, the next item is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for UPS for the data center. The furnace system is fourteen years old. The, the UPS provides power during an outage, it's designed to hold the power until the generators start providing power. Also, signs generators don't kick in, they might turn on, but they don't actually switch to give us the power. That gives, the UPS gives us enough time to order, we shut down the systems, otherwise the A bases will crash and some equipment. Basically impacted when we try everything. So that's what this device does. Any questions on that?
Thank you, this is. Yeah, but my whole thing is, is I believe that happens to that. I know, is, is I knew where I want to start the conversation, I think, to get anyone to say this last time. That's, I want to have a thing with Christmas in July. And last time, in all fairness, um, we set aside a whole list, kind of, we put out, we said, we'll take six million. You get small businesses, um, for another, I mean, check myself, and it's very little of that money. This is real, we're going to take that back. So now I am open because we did try to help. Business owner, we're going to take a, a fifty percent of that money. So I am open to some projects, but I also don't want it to be like. Well, there's money there, let's just go get it, when there's other ways to get it, and especially we're talking about. Some of these parties, that's a lot of money to move over to. I mean, um, I know, I assume, what might look to be some priorities in that public sector.
Alright, uh, lastly, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace a system called GFI Land Guard. It does the software patching of all our Windows systems. Uh, the current software stopped working in November. We started seeing that in December, we're like, we need to patch all the way, because it's, we're actually. We work with the vendor, the vendor had basically no help for us. Uh, this is due to be replaced next fiscal year anyway. Uh, but we're no, no longer wish to license this brand since there's no support. I have a feeling. One foot out the door, they're almost, correct? So we're looking to go in with a system called Wallace. Uh, the Wallace stuff not only just patches the PCs, but will patch whatever he calls the internet of things. So printers, anything else that's connected to the network, it'll patch those things. So that's, that's kind of a, a much, much better system than what they had that just basically stopped working in a way.
So did you get any way front back since we haven't had their service since the number twelve twenty two?
I think I think they're still about trying to recover it, we're on the end of the, the cycle though, so kind of, we'd be getting a lot back.
Um, council has not reviewed viability of you putting bridge on a contract, but that's something the board wants to do. We can always review the contract, this whole thing was caused.
That's where it's going down the bar, because you get some of this money back. This budget didn't forward it back, um, this issue there.
Sir.
Okay.
Um, this is for a five year period, but um, covered, so it's fifty thousand dollars in the year. Uh, and just as an aside, for all three of these projects, these are also a way to kind of help the general fund for the next. Couple of years, because it's possibly be a, so it might be able to serve some people for other things. Yeah, I see.
There's something. So, so. Much research is done with this, for example, this GFI land guard, land guard. Much research is done initially in, in selecting that. Uh, only to lead into how much research has been done with this products.
Well, Wallace movement actually had looked at five different systems. We looked at a system, vendor called Gardner. They do evaluations and they basically rank, they do a quadrant, and all the things up in the top right corner. Is, are good stuff, that's the stuff that. The demands of the companies that support their product well, can they have good market rates? Since they're capitalized, so. I think this GFI land guard is probably, this is actually big before this year. Um, I have a feeling it was the lowest cost, which not, doesn't always necessarily do the best. Yeah, but I don't know, that was your, your foremost here. Uh, the fact that this company is no longer even on the order, you know, space volumes too. So I had, you know, I, I think it is going kind of business, they kind of people support it, so they just told us, oh, well, you need to go. Fix it yourself. I already told you the support picture. So that, that began with looking at different systems. So we had our information security officer, Chris Verage, he went through and looked at different systems. He involved the managers from, well, uh, they're, Joe, the manager below me, to make sure that they met their needs too. And all three of them decided that this was the best one. Wasn't necessarily the cheapest one, but it had all the best features that it did. It wasn't the most expensive.
Well, you can use hand report, they turn, I call them beta testers. I, I like everybody else to do the beta testing. Are there other larger companies that they're using the system already successfully?
Yeah, and, and Wallace is actually the top one in the gardeners quadrant. They have the, the, they call it break the vision, which means that it does more than what other companies do, like I said, it, we've been patched. Uh, we, we ran it for three weeks on a limited basis, we did IT. And then we decided, let's see how it does on printers, because we had ever passed, the patch printers. It patched every printer in the whole county. It took it two days. But that's a lot less time than ever to take a person going around patching which one. So, um, that was pretty impressive. And then, um, we, we narrowed it down to three products that we test, throw from the Falcon. And each one of them did for two, two different weeks. So, uh, you know, that's pretty, pretty extensive.
Certainly, right? So my question is back to one point five million on, of the three sixty five licensing, the question goes to the admin and council. This qualifies under our punch because it's, it's a lax theory, but we have to have the day of business, it's not something new to the pandemic. It's just daily business, it's actually qualified.
It's technology.
That's an upgrade, but we already have it.
Correct, we're actually spending it, and for priority, I also wanted to point out that due date, you allocated three point six million already. And so today your request is one point eight million, so if you're forward.
About three point six? No?
No.
Usually have an IT if they can't get personnel to stay here.
Count today would be five point four million dollars.
Yeah, this takes you to that, but it, that's sort of the personnel retention. Sure, because I mean, I, I, I'm not here every day, but I'm here four or five, you know, I'm here quite a bit. And, uh, yeah, it seems like there's always a problem with, with technology, it always changes, always up there, bloody. Um, and if we can't get staff there to work with, what's he's having? The two cents.
Going back to super games, what you're all about, fuck that. That's three to the contract, right? So, so you're looking to pay it all upfront versus that's something we could budget for. Um, for year one, two, and three, they would accept that over three year timeframe?
Yeah, the way normally it works with Microsoft is you lock yourself in for the three year, because they issue the rest price. And plus, every year when they raise it, you don't have to incur that Austin cruise.
But.
But they allow you to pay in.
Every year? So that one point five can be right up to three in the budget process?
It could. I just mentioned that we could pay it upfront if we wanted to, to avoid that point from six.
Yeah, I only use on the part of them, but you guys, you guys uh, let IT get a large part of this. Other than saying, hey, look, uh, we'll give a piece for one year. But uh, you're getting a lot of money for multiple years. How much the sheriff asked for the generators? How much of um, my part of the generator is for IT?
Yeah, I don't, that's actually bleeding, so I believe that, half of that.
We take that with the money value that you benefit.
I'm beginning Johnson.
Yeah. More tennis than in the same.
Yeah, for one, there's two generators in there, one of them services the dispatch and one services uh, IT department. So it's probably not that many, but it will complicate it.
Thank you, sir.
Any other question?
Point priority, the current, uh, officer super is current, who had this threatened the budget, so we did, as if.
Well, good question. So use the money, the money in the budget. And so we can use here for retention, we use it in the budget for retention.
And other ways to do it.
So that's, that's to the point there, I wish that this list would have altered more. On what's possible elsewhere first coming here today, because it's a small amount of money at times, it's possible. It's what it's here for. Appreciate your perspective and intermission.
Okay, the next item is uh, our chief one.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Our project, uh, we propose to our, if part two of a two-part program involving our responses and getting the closest available unit, excuse me, to emergency. Um, it utilizes um, software and hardware, uh, that's specifically compatible with dispatch hardware. And now the house of dispatcher, to see our units moving around the county. And it makes um, the spillment product, which is a CAD computer, the dispatch software, the dispatch unit. It allows it to make the choice of which units to send. Uh, no longer does the, the human have to, who is wearing most of the money? People does that for them, make suggestions, they can't be over written, but make suggestions. So in the first part of the art fund you provided, uh, that's last award, uh, we bought what's called auto, auto vehicle locators, which allows the cast to perceive the units moving around. This proposal, this definition often provide mobile data terminals, which will allow us to uh, not only communicate back and forth with dispatch, not using radio, which is, you know, by push button. It also gives us routes in, it also allows us to timestamp incidents and have instances screens and information within the, the units that's available. Has that information, floor plan information, uh, response plans, those type of things. So it is, it is a second part continuation of that first part. But with that said, I'd like to point out, like many of the departments has in here, that um, fire department has a critical attention problem too. And we do have a problem with getting people to promote to the next level, especially to our time chief level. Because of some of the instances of how it happens and salaries are paid, we have two different types of employees. You have twenty-four hour employees, we have eight-hour day employees. And there is some inconsistencies there when, when they do the promoting. So the last few times we've had promotional opportunities, we've had to go out and recruit people within our agency to, to promote. So um, I agree with the sheriff said, uh, you know, if, if the money from our company utilized to um, offset those things, then I'll tell you today, gentlemen, I'll pull my project.
Yes, sir, I did, I'm similar. So I'm thinking back my mind for again, but you weren't here chief, but when we closed IT real Austin. Believe I got a hundred and thirty thousand for this same item. Rerouting due to IT. Can someone check into that? I believe we changed over our app, I'm something, but uh, I believe we have a hundred and thirty thousand set up for a couple of little rooms. Maybe we're kind of back in school.
There, there was some equipment in mine, it's all in my office. Um, unfortunately, it's no longer used. Um, it, I have a box of probably seventy motors and those are the things that communicate uh, with, with the dispatch software. They don't work with our current dispatch. So I can't, I can't even sell those backpacks, right?
So is there another county that can use them or?
It's out of the technology, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's not used by anybody anymore anymore. There's the, the current software won't talk to them. So.
And that's what worries about the IP I have before you. This is expensive just being independent. Independent of talking about.
Very well, good. If fire department would be willing to go look for other avenues, not the means to find our project. If, if there's those issues that everybody's having with them. Let's hold that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Now we have one, that's it.
Thank you.
The next two come from the next three in the organization.
This is amazing.
Thank you. For Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Matthew Boyett, King's County Administration. Um, I have the next two myself, uh, the first one is fifty thousand dollars for the Stratford Public Utility District. Uh, we refer to them as SPOD, uh, based on their acronym. And so they have received a grant from DWR to the tune of about six point two eight million dollars for a new water well, uh, to drill a new well and to have a water storage project for their district. Um, however, there's a challenge with that funding of DWR. DWR is going to be withholding ten percent of the grant award until after the project is complete. And so the district doesn't have the ten percent of that grant, which is about six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. They don't have that to float, the payment of their contractors and the payment to get that work done. And, you know, and, and so they're, they looked into financing to, to see um, where they can get that funding. But the financing to get six hundred and twenty-eight thousand is very expensive, um, another expense that they don't have. Um, so uh, Eric, uh, you know, big hat off to him, he worked with them to come up with, um, kind of like an amortization schedule to try to figure out what the cost would be to actually obtain that financing. Um, so that way they're not out of pocket, you need this money. So the request before you is the expense in order to obtain the financing to kind of float them to the time in which DWR will get back that ten percent. So that way they can, you know, get their six million dollar project done and still not be um, out of pocket and in financial hardships for themselves, so.
I think that is a job, yes. And then related to our, uh, the only question is, uh, we think there is a little one hundred fifty K or?
No, no, if Eric has the numbers worked out, the, the funding is already there. This is just interim financing in order to get past the ten percent intention.
Okay. And then do they get the one fifty thousand back after it's all done, or this part we just joined in?
Uh, frankly, if I'm wrong here, but the fifty thousand is like the.
Finance.
The, the financing, the interest, the fees and all of that, that the bank gets to uh, floating like that, that loan, but.
It currently not right.
Okay, perfect, yes. So, yeah. So, and that's, that's that. What's the question there, if you wanted to, my next item? Okay, so my next item is for the Kitten City Community Services District, um, for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So Caltrans is currently building a roundabout at Bernard Drive and State Highway, uh, State Route forty-one. Uh, nice big fancy roundabout, which is going to improve traffic flow and uh, things like that. The issue is the district currently has a singular PVC water line that runs directly underneath where that roundabout is going to be. Um, so in the event that the, you know, once the roundabout is complete, and in the event that in the future that that water line breaks or ever needs to be repaired, the district will essentially have to dig up that roundabout, repair the line, and rebuild that roundabout again. Something that the district would never be able to afford. So they're trying to get ahead of that and try to find funding to reroute that singular line to essentially make two lines, one running north and one running south of that roundabout. So that way in the future, if there are any breaks, leaks or anything that needs to be repaired, they don't have to damage that roundabout that they would essentially not be able to pay for. Um, so, and that does uh, the water line, the singular water line there now, that does serve all of those businesses to um, to the east. Um, so you've got, you know, all your heavy hitters there, In-N-Out, Bravo, Starbucks, Chevron and stuff like that. So a lot of critical services there. So with, without the funding, and I'll speak to this point because we're, um, if, if they didn't get the artwork funding here, they would essentially have to get a loan from Caltrans, um, very expensive loan, um, which they themselves would have to pass on to their rate payers. So um, you know, to the tune of several hundred, you know, dollars per year for a customer. Um, so they're, they're, they're trying to avoid that because their rate payers have been through enough, you know, in the pandemic as it is with economic uncertainty and economic hardships. So they're just trying to um, you know, find funding elsewhere to ensure that uh, they don't have any catastrophic issues uh, getting water. Um, and you know, say drinking water to those on the inside of forty-one in the future.
Hey, and I appreciate you uh, communicating with the city, but as the uh, county representative for them, I will be the first to say that um, this is a project that in favor of team today. And I have a discussion later, here's the reasons why. Um, one, Caltrans wanted to deal with. Okay, now there's an existing water line that the community, you know, Kellman aren't paid for and put in. I'd be the first one to go to Sacramento if the day came that after Caltrans put it down. And, and the water comes down to the community, I'd be the first one in Caltrans saying, communities aren't paid for yet. How could, how could the community pay for something that Caltrans said, when it come in, put away on time, your system project? Get there. And so that's a fight, they'd be more happy to engage that and save this pot of money right now. And secondly, um, if it came to that, again, you do have, since we had announced the board, um, in two thousand and ten invested a lot of money to um, establish that Kellman City Chamber of Commerce. Those big businesses should be paying leaders to Kellman City Chamber of Commerce. Leadership should be there, if the most of like that came or those big businesses could and should, and yeah. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, Caltrans, that discussion, Caltrans probably going to also, that's something that the fourth quarter is very true. This is something I think that. And so, um, Joe, on, on that roundabout, they're still in the nine cities, correct?
Correct.
They don't even know they can live in.
Correct.
So this is kind of way ahead of time. I mean, I would, I would, if this was going to happen, it happened during construction and be, you know, found in the blueprint where they had water to be. I think that's getting ahead of it because they'll be the danger. I think they have this type of, and if they even do it, I mean, there's been also talk that they're going to go around it.
They, they did send me blueprints, um, as to where they're proposing the lines to be rerouted north and south of the proposed wood bridge or the roundabout. You know, that's still good.
And we can, we can get some more information, I think, uh, a reference C S P, but in the marriage is kind of the same. I said it's time for annual, um, the check that we had, the water treatment plants, I think they're coming for their. Some dollars or something.
Yeah, very soon, we just got the request, uh, I blast like back in the last week.
I'll see this as a matter to, to my district, I see this fiscal week. Sam, that we just failed to listen, and I'm talking about this later.
There'll be money left open that range.
Wouldn't say that in construction and the bridge brought the water wrong.
So, for that concludes our presentation. And at this time, need a request to authorize the amount. However, there has been a significant amount of discussion. I would recommend taking or pulling all items at the board's table or to be taken independently as a separate vote.
Um, I would recommend you could do each item separately as a separate, separate vote, or you could specifically identify each one if you want to include in a single motion. Uh, the specific expenditures.
Before the, before the chair intends a motion, um, the other option too, it might be cleaner. Um, I didn't do some math, math in the past, I didn't do some math here. The other option is to table this and have staff come back with this lay down, cleaner for us. Because, because today.
It may take a while.
Yeah, and I, and, and I think that um, there might have been enough discussion that you had enough direction to sit down. I got my list, my list comes out, put it on, only thirty-two point four in the day today on, on projects that I'd be having the support today. So I don't know how you, how you want to get there, but I think that's further than making the stage of making a motion that will later prevent us from discussing some of this publicity.
We do have one item though, that is to award the contractor for the war chambers upgrade on the next item. So if we can just take a motion to approve that, solutionality goes once and be able to process that.
Or the other option, I think this chair is just go ahead and approve them all and bring them up during budget, because when's budget hearings? Do you have budget hearings? Yeah, so you, you know, you'll have another bite of the apple, uh, but at least it will have these funds appropriated. But they can always change at budget.
Yeah, personally, I, I appreciate that. Personally, I can, I can, for some reason, it's private, just my principle. I think it's cleaner and um, as with the chambers, I understand that there's a timeline to that. And I think that's something everyone will support anyways on there. Um, but, but moving forward, I'd have this come back quicker because uh, we do know that there's a very necessary uh, time frame right now to recruit, for, for, on, on what we've heard, so I'd like to get that back soon. So I'm gonna. We did second time, I'm clearing out this list too. And so, uh, Chair, get a motion to table this, where you're back next year.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to the table list and bring it back, not discussed, and then we'll vote on it.
Second.
Even the war chambers?
But we're gonna take that up next.
Actually, the name should approve the art for mine, but I don't want to be.
Yeah.
So, uh, so that one needs to go today. Would you be willing to modify your motion to table all the items on the list except the item relevant to the change?
So um, if I could, I think it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve the um, ARCA funds for the item relevant to the chambers and then a motion to table all other items on the list.
It's actually canceled. So we could, we could do that with one motion.
Well, I think you would do it with two. The first one would be um, the ARCA, you can do it with one motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve our funding for the war chambers and table the rest of the items until, and discuss until next year. There you go. We said. She might have been said in my heart.
John House?
Yes.
Richard Nani, that's where you're.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Andrew Higginis?
Yes. And no mean that this represent our ways that we're taking care of ourselves first. We just want clarity before we vote on the rest of the twenty items. And we never cut ourselves first. I suppose the guys get off our hands and we get out, so.
Yes.
Oh, let's take a five-minute recess, please.
Good morning again, and that's the body of King's County administration. Uh, so before your board this morning is the second reading in our master schedule ordinance. So, board, sixteen for this session. Changes, steps as to work here a week later, um, on sixteen, uh, excuse me. I was before your. First reading, knowing person or written testimony. Um, and so I'm before your board this morning. Go ahead. Wait at the second reading. Schedule war. This, uh, before you this morning is the same exact, for you during the first reading. Third. So if waived and adopted this morning, uh, before your word will be July sixth.
No questions, comments, I'll make a motion. Here in a second.
Hey. Just the chairman members of board. Office. So this morning, question that your resolution. Focus. See, floodwater. Then matter. Is caused by. It's coming. I will probably have to, it's a very strong spring. Possibly significant. Or story of money. Cover to cover. Just have an account. March night. The flooding is anticipated. It's a far. There's no. Doing flood. Waste percent. Floodwater. Medical. That's really. Such as. Skin rashes, gastro intestinal issues and tetanus. So the Kings County Health Officer, Dr. Milton Teske. And that a significant threat to public health exists due to hazardous waste resulted from the flooding. So the presence of contaminated floodwater, there is infection diseases and potential for vector borne illnesses. Moreover, the stagnant water has resulted in a notable rise in mosquitoes and insects around the flooded areas and the layer. Uh, thereby presenting an imminent risk of vector borne illnesses. So on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the Health Officer issued a proclamation of local health emergency due to floodwater contamination and vector borne illness. So if ratified by your board this morning, the proclamation, the proclamation will be forwarded to the state office and emergency services. Uh, with that, I expect a request that your board adopt a resolution, ratifying the county health officer's declaration of a local health emergency due to floodwater contamination and vector borne illness issued in May thirty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, and declare a local emergency due to floodwater contamination and vector borne illness caused by recent flooding in Kings County.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, that's a lot.
I have a question. So with this ordinance, if we vote it in place, will this allow us to access funds to help treating mosquitoes?
Yeah, that will. I'll probably have to refer that to Rosemary, but that's the way I understand it. Uh, again, this will make us eligible to go to the state and get some more funding, but I think, Rosemary, remember.
Good morning, Rosemary Rand Public Health. Yes, it will allow us to get more funding for either manpower, planes and materials to mitigate any mosquitoes that are increasing and actual mosquito abatement has proven that there's more mosquitoes this year than there have been in the years past. So.
I want to feel that.
Yes. So it's in preparation.
Make the spring with the flying.
I'm sorry?
Like the spring to probably decline.
They can, they can do aerial applications or physical applications. Uh, I think for the, when I talked to Michael Kavanaugh, mosquito abatement, due to the larger areas, aerial application would probably be ideal. And so in order, we don't have the resources locally and actually most counties don't with their mosquito abaintments. This would allow us to go to the state to access more resources to be able to do this.
Yeah, no, and I, I agree with that. And plus all of the waste that's coming out, uh, around some of the sewers, uh, we'll probably maybe, maybe consider adding solid waste to this, uh, declaration as well, if we can possibly. It's kind of a stretch, but.
We can burn it, you're right on mosquitoes' air.
Exactly. Yeah, you know.
Oh, it is contaminated. I mean, we've tested the waters even in the Kings River and the, um, Tulare Lake basin. It's high in fecal contents, which is not a surprise. Um, so we would highlight our people not be in the water, near the water, just use the risks.
Yeah, and, and the solid waste that is coming out, sewers and the bridges and everything else that's on the side of the road, you know, that, that is also spent some time in the water, so it also bears that same, uh, contamination, except the vectors will probably not have that big of a problem with that part of it. It could be, I guess, if they're standing water. Moved as presented.
I give it to the house.
John Eves?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Brubaker?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Pivenes?
Yes.
Thank you. Our classes by the finger. Next up, the services.
Yes. Good morning again. Feel like if, I should probably have a seat up here, been up in the dience this morning. But I did want to bring to your attention a very important issue. Elder independent abuse is a silent epidemic taking the form of physical abuse, emotional abuse, neglect, exploitation and abandonment. According to the National Council on Aging, approximately one in ten Americans age sixty or above um, have experienced some form of elder abuse. Within ever aging population, the magnitude of this issue will only increase if we fail to act now. I propose that we adopt a resolution to comply June twenty twenty-three as Elder Independent Abuse Awareness Month. And in dedicating this month to raise awareness about elder independent abuse, we will bring this issue to the forefront of public consciousness, educate our community and provide much needed support and resources to victims. This initiative will serve as a powerful statement to protecting and caring for our elder independent residents. It is a call to action. To spot signs, to prevent it and to report it. But it is also a call for empathy, a reminder that our elders, elders deserve our respect, our care and our protection. They deserve to live their lives free and with dignity. Um, and into declaring June twenty twenty-three as Elder Independent Abuse Awareness Month, we will also be recognizing the tireless, tireless work of professionals and volunteers who fight this epidemic. This initiative is not only about combating abuse, but it is also about fostering a culture of fear, respect and dignity towards our elders and dependent adults. And based on these facts, I ask you to adopt June two thousand and twenty-three as Elder Independent Awareness Month. Thank you. I'd also like to introduce Jason Kemp, Kemp and me.
Sure.
Good morning, chairman, members of the board. Uh, Sarah just actually kind of summarized everything for me pretty well. Thank you. But I'll just get into it. Um, on June fifteenth, two thousand and six, the International Network for Prevention of Elder Abuse and World Health Organization launched World Elder Abuse Day. Here in California, lawmakers feel that the designation of a single day doesn't do enough to spread that awareness and declared the entire month of June as elder abuse awareness. I come to you with, uh, Sarah Hacker and Kings County Commission on Aging. Um, this morning with a resolution declaring June as Elder Independent Abuse Awareness Month in Kings County. Our Kings County Adult Protective Service Unit investigates referrals of suspected abuse or neglect of our elderly and dependent adults. In two thousand and twenty-two, our team of APS sofa workers investigated seven hundred and seventeen cases of abuse or neglect. Within that same time period in twenty twenty-two, Kings County Long Term Care Ombudsman responded to a hundred and twenty-two allegations of elder independent abuse within facilities located here in Kings County. In order to bring awareness to the community of this important issue this year, Kings County Human Service Agency, the District Attorney's Office, Commission on Aging, are partnering to place purple pinwheels in each community. Uh, we'll be putting out seven hundred and seventeen pinwheels. Um, and each community will have, uh, so we'll say, uh, Corcoran. However many referrals that we received for that, uh, year, that's how many pinwheels will be placing in the city of Corcoran. Um, same thing with each one of the other different communities throughout county. We will also be serving a free pancake breakfast at the Commission on Aging's office on June fifteenth. Hope that you all will get a chance to come. There will be live entertainment, raffle and vendors. In closing, I ask that your board adopt the presentation, the presented resolution declaring June twenty twenty-three World Elder Abuse Awareness Month here in Kings County. And if you have any questions for either Sarah or myself, or even Bobby, I'd be glad to answer any of them.
Any questions? Thanks for the work. I'm finding the category gets some respect.
If you're over sixty, uh, you're getting to that age of.
Someone yelled to me, they have the other abuse. Take it, go, go home, take it, no one in the yellow. I'll get a protective service. I need a built pinwheel in my front yard.
Uh, we can, we can make that happen.
With no question, comments, I'll make a motion presented. Now that I'm in a category.
You have a conflict of interest. Now you gotta find another pinwheel.
Uh, as many of you guys would like, we have plenty of pinwheels, uh, and you know, we, we appreciate you guys' support and, um, it is. Um, I thank all of my staff and Sarah's staff, mommy's staff, you know, the, the elder population is sometimes forgotten and this is a chance for us to, uh.
Well, I tell the younger generation we got money.
Joe Eves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Brubaker?
Yeah.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Pivenes?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, on to Public Works Department items. Few items.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, I'm with the board, Mitch Pobere, Chief Engineer with Public Works Department. Before your board this morning requesting the approval of the First Amendment to a consultant service agreement with Newberry Engineers, formerly known as Drake Taglin and Associates. This is for the Seventeenth Avenue and Houston Avenue Signalization Project. We're requesting that your board approve the amendment and also authorize the public works director to sign amendment number one. On October thirty first of twenty seventeen, the board approved a consultant service agreement with Drake Taglin for three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to prepare the plan specifications and the estimate package for the traffic signal project at the much needed intersection. The right away portion of the project had some delays, which stemmed and provided now the need to update property title reports, revise appraisal and also finish the acquisition services in order to expand the right of way in order to fit the new geometric of the tracker signal. So we're requesting the amendment amount would be thirty two thousand two hundred, twenty thousand of which are required tasks. Twelve thousand two hundred, which would be optional task. We would like the approval of the full amount, which would be the new contract amount of just under three hundred and fifty thousand. This one still fall under the federal reimbursement rate, so eighty eight point five three was come from the C M A, University Conference and the eleven point four seven, that should be from the County Road Fund. So we're recommending that the board approve the amendment and authorize the public works director to sign the amendment. If you have any questions.
I do have a question. So this is just a study, this recommend if it's going to need stabilization or to flip signals or.
No, so we've already done the study. We've already started initiating the project for the traffic signal. This is just amending the consultant service agreement to finish the right of way acquisition.
And then there are no, they tell us another area that they have to have roundabout that not option here, right?
If it was an option, it would have been considered early on. So when they first set the intersection, they admitted to the four way stop. At that point, that's the temporary measure between a permanent solution being the traffic signal and roundabout. In this case, the geometries, probably traffic signal was.
It's a three way stop too, but someday maybe.
No, it's four, it's four way because the other one, Seventeenth Southbound dead end set on ID. But it's a dedicated four way stop. One leg is limited.
Yeah.
The southbound lane.
But no question, comments at all. It's pretty much presented. There's seconds.
It's Robert Anderson, by now it's Friday.
Joe Nabs.
Yes.
Doug Brubin.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Kaboomdies.
Yes, maybe not interact with nothing. Ten twenty, I think I would. You have to at eight o'clock in the afternoon, three o'clock in the afternoon in school. Thank you. Good job.
He's presenting item two.
Jim Sbecka again.
Good morning, good morning, Chairman Valley, members of the board. My name is Jim Henderson, Go Main and Superintendent. On April fourteenth, one bid was received from R E Jacobs Construction in the amount of four hundred and fifty four thousand. R E Jacobs was the only person in perspective business. So the boardroom will be improved, will improve on the American, the Disabilities Act will create a compliant podium along with access ramp and work on some of the new technology within here and work on the bias. There's no impact to the general fund, funding for this project is from the American Rescue Act. Recommendation is to award the construction contract to, for the Kings County Board of Supervisors, board improvement this project to R E Jacobs Construction. The notice of award has been reviewed by county council, asked you more. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
There are no questions, comments, but chairman for adoption, that presented second.
Motion by Dan and by Jim Nabs, man.
Joe Nabs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Brubin.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Kaboomdies.
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to the board and all the staff that has worked on this project. They has been on loan for years. And hopefully after, we'll be awarded it today, we can have a date for when we can start.
Give it a moment.
Yes. Thank you.
Very much.
Yeah, at least you're not the stop signal. That's been six years. You do have some window.
Why Sarah?
Good morning. I have the next agenda item. I just didn't want to delay the meeting.
Move me right along.
Chairman, members of the board, the next item is the consider receiving improvement, the annual reporting of the sheriff's office military surplus equipment. If you recall, we brought this before your board last year. And it's just a technicality that we cannot put on a consistent calendar. It has to be open for public comment. So the items are listed. I just stand here before you if you have any questions or if the public has any comments they'd like to provide.
Thanks, Sarah. Remember, public, or comment on something, say that.
Yeah, I would just appreciate the board's support and would ask for the board to approve the annual reporting of the sheriff's office military equipment. And the district's office will be back probably next week or the following week to do theirs. I'm guessing soon.
Will be presented.
Second.
Joe Nabs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Brubin.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Kaboomdies.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
You want to use word of stuff, we'll go quick. Continue to be engaged with the flooding issues. The LaReno Foods field hearing was openly closed and completed. Want to thank the board for the lab co hearing. We annexed a portion additional land into the Tulare Lake Greenwich District. Also approved the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four budget. Current meeting, we approved the contract with MB Transportation. They've had the operations and made it to the fleet for quite a while, about ten years now. And so they will operate for the next five with a couple of one year extensions. Also approved an electric vehicle charging station that will be at the new transit station. We approved the two thousand twenty three hundred and four budget as well. And then there are some electric vehicle in the fleet that are operating now. And there seems to be a lot of interest, a lot of people have taken pictures with them. They think they're cute. I think they're foxy looking, but they're. The Kings County Association of Governments reviewed population numbers, housing numbers and approved some salary adjustments in that organization. There was a ribbon cutting out at the palace for the new expansion project, getting ready for the fortieth anniversary. That was held on the May twenty fifth and they, it has really changed the environment out there if you have not been to the palace in a while.
You go tell me you're recognizing a fair, in the year Joe.
Oh, yeah, that's right. And I was. The senior health fair, Bobby, I think, has left, but Bobby did a great job with Commission on Aging with the senior health fair, very well attended, free pancakes and all kinds of information. That was on May twenty sixth. Memorial Day Community Dance was held at the Fleet Reserve on the May twenty sixth as well, a little over a hundred people. It was a nice evening for that event. And down in Corcoran, the Corcoran Gateway Park hosted the Mental Health Matters Event that was on Saturday, the twenty seventh. That wrapped up mental health month of May. The Memorial Day Avenue Flags was held at Grangeville, was a great event. Mike Spicer, Dr. Short, Henry Gudrun and Thurlun Cozad, along with a couple of others, where their flags were posted for the first time. The Kings Waste Recycling Board met on May thirty first and all the reports were reviewed and updates to some projects. If you've been out there, there's a little over five thousand tons of stuff, construction and demolition debris. They get issue a contract to hallway from Kern County that's going to come down to grind that. They think it's going to be about a seven to ten day project. So but hopefully you'll start seeing that Mount Everest start going down soon. Went to Corcoran, Global Impact Group was distributing Android tablets to seniors. The tablets are part of the community benefit program. I do have some the information for area and I'd really like to see the county get behind this. This distributes tablets to senior population as well as a whole list of folks, whether it's a SNAP program, food stamps, social security, Medicaid, section eight, Bel ramp, Indian reservation, veterans and free reduced school lunch. So it's really for everyone. It's really an effort to close the digital divide. These are hotspot enabled devices as well. And so it really helps get digital information to some folks that may not be able to afford some of these tablets. They're nice little units and it was a very, very good event at the King Boswell system.
So if I show up, am I with me? Like, what?
Sixty year qualified, yeah. Yeah. You would, you would do it. Lamoore High School graduation and silver grab was held. Had the pleasure of cooking three hundred hamburgers, three hundred hot dogs and, and twelve hundred tortillas. Or some of those became tostadas because I think they got a little crispy, but they were all supposed to be tortillas. Kings County Fire Department, want to thank them for inviting and having graduation. Bringing two new staff members into the department. Thank you, chief, and good luck with those two individuals. MIQ dinner was held on June third, supporting Mary Immaculate Queen Park or school in Lamoore. And then the Kings Symphony Concert was held on June fourth. Turned out to be a nice evening in the park in Haverford. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I was gonna start till Joe started. Just helped a little bit at the MIQ with field this weekend, the sun raiser and also we had Kings Waste and Recycling. And so our Board of Equations meetings is last week, which I missed. On it. But anyway, with that, it's all I got.
Yeah, kind of same lines as supervisor Nabs and supervisor Goodness, ribbon cutting at the palace. Supervisor Robinson and I both delighted that women are dumping her lunch. We got water issues. EDC was last Tuesday and then I also.
Most importantly, I took my kid to Disneyland and Legoland.
That was good. Stan.
And we did, yes. Attended the palace ribbon cutting, so impressed to the touch yoke cuts. Spoke to the Republican women on water and depending emergency. Assisted some constituents in regards to illegal dumping. So thanks to Public Works and specifically Dwayne Cooper. Through the constituents' questions in regards to cemetery districts, also in regards to tax payments, so Eric's still here. Thanks to Eric Gonzalez for his help on that. Thank you.
Your board has received a notice of action seeking a challenge to this kind of bar port ordinance dated May thirtieth. Your board also received a finding on the group situation under temporary change, modestly water projects. Upper right places that used that stated May nineteenth from the Department of Water Resources. And let's see, board received a process project. First, are the Kings County. For upcoming events, when you have four, the Moore Chamber Commerce is supposed to be the Brock, the Marver, Arthur, Moore Plaza. Friday, June ninth, from six thirty to nine. The Children's Storybook, Harding and Museum in Haverford will host Diamond Day on Sunday, June tenth, nine thirty to twelve. And the Avonale Rotary Club will present its first ever rodeo and dance at the Avonale Sports Conference on Sunday, June eleventh, and that starts at five P M. And Commission on Aging Breakfast, Pancake Breakfast will be June fifteenth. I do not have the hour. Announcement today, I've added it. And the seventy sixth Annual Kings, Kings Fair will take place in Haverford from June fifteenth through the eighteenth. This year's theme is agriculture and all that jazz. Lastly, we save a date for the ribbon cutting of the Kings Building, formerly the old hospital, will take place on August thirtieth, Friday night one, that is open to the public. For upcoming items, administration has two. We have some benefits renewal agreement and notice of non-gaming land acquisition application. The act commission has four items, three relating to various agreements with the Department of Food and Culture. Assistant clerk reporter has an item for the purchase of digital micro machine. Labor House has an agreement, Wigan's smart pathways. And lastly, help ask a request to remove intended and will be repented them.
June fifteenth, it starts at nine o'clock. We're gonna have a pancake, learn how to flip pancakes starting about eight thirty. So we'll also have a scrambled egg and ham, I mean sausage tossing program as well. So if you want to show up about eight thirty, you put time you're starting to eat. I, I know for the senior people, you can show up at nine o'clock. Yeah, but for those of you that want to participate and, and, and have a chance to have a blackjack flipping and scrambled egg tossing and sausage preparing down this hard body at third.
It's June fifteen.
June fifteen, first day affair. Don't miss the cheap show.
All right. Thank you, sir. That takes a spoke session, two albums, first snow matter and conference. Whatever did you share yours with?
Thank you, everyone, for your time.